And the focus is on oil and gas regulations. I am John Kafalas, Commissioner District One, Kristin Stevens, Commissioner from District Two, and Jody, Commissioner Shadak McNally from District Three. We, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matt Lafferty, who can introduce himself and set the stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kafalas. Matt Lafferty with the Community Development Department. I'm the principal planner here at the county, working on advanced planning activities. And with us tonight, there are numerous people in the audience. I'll start with, to my left is Matt Sura. Matt Sura is our consultant, helping us draft the regulations for oil and gas. He joins us tonight. And to my right is Frank Howe, the Assistant County Attorney. So, he's present tonight. And then in the front row of the meeting room here, we have Community Development Director, Leslie Ellis. Dr. Paul Mayer, I remember from this afternoon, I'm sorry about that, from the Community Health Department. Leah Schneider from Public Health and Environment, and Chris Manley from the Public Health and Environment Department. Online, we have Sean Hackett, who is with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. He was with us at 1:30 today. And also observing and available, if necessary, is Lori Catterich, our CPIR Director for the county. And so that's everybody that's present tonight. We're here to try to facilitate conversation with you three, the Commissioners, to give us some headway as to how you believe, from the public presentations that we've been doing, public meetings, how we should go forward, what direction you want to give us, so that we could come up with a draft set of regulations to put out to the public for public comment, and then ultimately, late July, get to a point where we can come to you guys with a recommendation for a hearing, and have those items looked at. Matt Sura's going to give us a presentation tonight. But prior to that presentation, and his presentation is about questions that have come up throughout the process and to frame the conversation tonight. But before that, Mr. Hackett wanted to finish some comments from this afternoon and have some of those types.
And if I might just give a little bit more of an introduction to Sean. He's a real resource for our local governments, and I'm expecting that we're going to see more and more of Sean as we get into these issues. Sean Hackett is the Energy Liaison for the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And in his role, Sean develops and coordinates the department's response to an oversight of oil and gas-related issues, including policy development designed to protect public health, safety, welfare, and the environment. Sean also coordinates and collaborates with the Environmental and Public Health Divisions, local governments, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and other stakeholders to address energy-related issues to the protection of public health, safety, welfare, and the environment during oil and gas development. So Sean, we'll hand it over to you.
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Sura, and it's good to see you all again, Commissioners. Just wanted to remind folks, I guess I can't see how many members of the public might be in attendance, but for those of you who didn't attend, I definitely recommend that you go back and review the full recording of the presentation that Dr. Christy Richardson with CDPHG gave. But real quick to provide a Cliff Notes-type summary, CDPHG's toxicologist, Dr. Christy Richardson, provided an overview of the 2019 Human Health Risk Assessment that was contracted by CDPHG. That study used actual emissions data collected from 2014 to 2016 to model potential exposures to pollutants from oil and gas facilities at different distances and during different phases of development. And as Dr. Richardson discussed, the study concluded that there may be a risk of negative health impacts, for example, headaches, dizziness, respiratory, eye and skin irritation from short-term exposures to chemicals such as benzene during worst-case scenarios. And the study indicated, I think, an important point, that development phase, which we refer to as flowback, that was the phase with the highest potential for emissions and exposures during the production phase. So after a well is producing oil and gas, they were generally their lowest relative to the health guideline values. And in fact, all of the exposures that were modeled during the production phase were below those health guideline values that CDPHG uses to assess health risk. So that's a brief summary of Dr. Richardson's presentation. And again, I recommend going back and seeing it directly from her. She's very good at what she does. But one thing that I wanted to mention, I forgot to follow up then, was some of the regulatory changes that have happened in Colorado since the emissions were collected for that study. That study, as a reminder, was based on emissions data that was collected by CSU in 2016. And most of it was based on emissions that happened after 2014, when stricter methane and volatile organic compound leak detection and repair requirements went into effect. Some of the data from Garfield County, however, was before 2014, when there were less strict policies in effect. So just wanted to give some highlights of some of the changes and regulations that have happened since 2014. As many of you know, in 2014, Colorado became the first state in the nation to require companies to detect and repair methane and VOC leaks from their operations. Since then, Colorado's undertaken several significant rulemakings that further reduce the potential for emissions from the industry. So, a particular relevance to the discussion tonight, in 2017, the Air Quality Control Commission in the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, they strengthened and clarified requirements that oil and gas facilities must operate without venting. And you're probably aware, but venting is where emissions are allowed to escape, or they're released directly into the atmosphere without being controlled, as opposed to flaring, which is where emissions are captured or routed to a control device, typically a flare or some other combustion device, as opposed to venting them directly into the atmosphere. So those enhanced requirements targeted storage tanks, which are the largest source of emissions at oil and gas facilities. And we think they were resulting, or they're driving significant emissions reductions from storage tanks and other pieces of equipment. And then more recently, in 2019, in order to implement the requirement in Senate Bill 19181 to minimize emissions from the oil and gas industry, and also to take the first important steps to achieving our greenhouse gas emission reduction targets that are highlighted in House Bill 1261, the Air Quality Control Commission strengthened and expanded their emission control requirements for storage tanks. Also, they strengthened their leak detection and repair requirements, as well as their pneumatic controller inspection and maintenance requirements. And for those who aren't aware, pneumatic controllers are instruments that are very widespread in the oil and gas industry to monitor a variety of different process parameters, such as liquid level, gas level, pressure, temperature, those types of things. Pneumatic controllers individually are believed to have low emissions, but due to how widespread they are in the industry, collectively, they're a very large source of emissions. And previously, before this rulemaking, oil and gas companies were allowed to use the higher emitting pneumatic controllers, or controllers that continuously would emit natural gas. And now with these new requirements adopted in 2019, this was based on a consensus rulemaking. It's one of the, another example of Colorado leading the pack in adopting first-of-its-kind regulations. Now, operators will be required to use non-emitting pneumatic controllers. And we anticipate that that rulemaking will lead to large emission reductions from pneumatic controllers over the next two years and beyond. And then another things, some things that have changed since then are industry operations. When the emissions study was conducted, a lot of operators were not using some practices that reduced emissions. For example, they were using what are called open-top flowback tanks. And flowback, again, is the highest phase of emissions, or highest potential for emissions. And also, they weren't using a process known as green completions as widely. And green completions are, or they're also referred to as reduced emission credits. And what they essentially require is that operators capture gas at the wellhead immediately after the well's completed, and then send it directly to the pipeline. And they minimize the need for venting and flaring and other temporary equipment on-site. So now, green completions are required under COGCC's new mission rules, and they're much more widespread since 2014. In addition to these regulatory requirements adopted by the Air Commission, COGCC undertook a comprehensive overhaul of their regulations, known as the Mission Change Rules, which banned the practice of routine flaring. And so, just wanted to provide that summary. And also, important to note that although a lot of work has been done to minimize emissions, CDPHG's work is far from finished, and we certainly have a lot more to do in order to attain our ozone requirements or ozone standards and to combat climate change. So to that end, the Air Division is undertaking the greenhouse gas, oil and gas stakeholder process, which I mentioned. And I believe they're going to request a hearing in September and hold the actual hearing in December. So with that, I'm happy to stick around and answer any questions you might have. But also, just so you're aware and others who might be listening in, I have recorded a presentation that provides an overview of CDPHG's regulations and how we interact with COGCC. And that's posted on CDPHG's website, www.colorado.gov/OGhealth. And there's a regulation section where you can find that presentation. So, thanks again, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much, Sean. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Mr. Hackett at this time? I guess we're good for now, sir.
Thanks, Sean. And I know that Sean is going to stick around for a while, and through some of our discussions, and if there are questions that come up, that, you know, we have colleagues from the Health Department here, but Sean is also available to answer questions that are more related to the Air Quality Control Commission regulations. So, I'm going to pivot to share my screen and go through a quick PowerPoint. I hope it's quick. So, I just wanted to quickly recap that we're, on May 24th, we're doing two work sessions. We're going to be posting a draft regulations, at least the plan is, to post some draft regulations by the end of this week, to have at least one open house in June, June 3rd. It's currently dated for next week. And then we're looking at July 9th, Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners' work session, July 21st, Planning Commission hearing, and then ultimately, July 26th, to the Board of County Commissioners' hearing. I wonder if there's a way to get rid of that.
I think that's here.
There you go. Yeah. So, the outline of discussion items were something that I included in the materials that you received. It was one of the first after the proposed regulations. It's about a five-page memo, and it just tried to summarize some of the questions that we were hearing from you primarily, but also from some of the members of the public. And I tried to limit it to what I thought we had time for tonight. I certainly don't want to preclude you from bringing up any issues that you have, or any questions that you have. We are here to answer your questions about any of the code revisions. But these were an effort to try to direct the discussion a bit. And again, and if you decide that you would rather not hear these, you know, we can depart from this list at any time. But we're looking at issues such as setbacks from oil and gas development, setbacks from residences, whether pipelines should be addressed in regulations, injection wells, looking at reverse setbacks, reverse setbacks, setbacks from plugged and abandoned wells, looking at fines and penalties, application fees, and then finally, geophysical seismic surveys. Again, these are some of the issues that we knew that there was some interest, but we're open to hearing your questions as well. Without further ado, I can start with these questions, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Matt. Let me just check in with my colleagues.
Sure.
Are you good with this line of action?
Yes, I am. Is, are we able to ask, I had a few notes about a couple of specific things I've run up before, but I can add those at the end if we get there. If not, I can have another.
So are those additional questions in the ten that are before us?
Yep.
So maybe I would recommend that, if you're okay with this.
If you're going to do this, then maybe it will be addressed.
That's what I would recommend, and then we can do additional questions.
Great. So the first issue is whether pipelines should be addressed in the regulations. And staff generally agrees that pipelines should be more directly regulated. There are three types of pipelines. There's the flow lines that are really associated with the oil and gas development on-site, and typically, it is on-site. There are occasions, and we have examples of that within Larimer County, where you've got the wellheads located in a separate place from the production facilities, which are tank batteries and the like. And those connections between those two are flow lines. Then you have gathering lines, which are connecting a number of different oil and gas locations. And then you have transmission lines, which are one of the trunk lines. And right now, your regulations really only look at those trunk lines, those transmission lines for oil and gas development. Those are the larger lines, over 10 inches in diameter. And there is certainly good precedent, and I think good reason, to want to know where those gathering lines go. And again, those flow lines are something that would be in your purview, and certainly are part of an oil and gas facility process. So, we would, the staff generally agrees that we would want to expand, to include some of those gathering systems, and we'll come back to you, if that makes sense, with some regulations looking at gathering lines.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad to hear that. I definitely, that was part of some of my section here, to talk about the gathering lines and the flow lines. I know there is a gentleman who used to be a county commissioner that has a formula that he's scientifically used from the industry to talk about the potential blast area, or the areas around from those gathering lines. Are you going to be looking at some of those, are we going to go that technical and use some of those calculations to determine the area around those?
I'm familiar with, I'm, he did, it's a former Commissioner Joswick.
Yep.
From La Plata County. And yes, we did look at his comments, and they were good comments. Again, you know, it's an area that is probably going to have to be, it's not an oil and gas facility as defined currently in the regulations, and I don't think that it probably warrants the kind of being treated as an oil and gas facility. It almost needs to be separate type of process and different regulations, different setbacks, as you said.
Yeah.
You know, for the different needs specific to a gathering pipeline.
So, let me understand, make sure I'm hearing you correctly, if I might, Mr. Chair. They're saying that maybe they don't belong here, but in like a 1041 permit process?
Right.
Or a little bit of both?
It could be, it could be either.
Okay.
So it could be dealt with, but just have different regulations than oil and gas facility. I don't believe that a 2,000-foot setback is necessary for a pipeline. However, there are, you know, some citing requirements that we would want to look at, setback requirements that we would want to look at, leak detection-type requirements. So some of those would be very specific to a pipeline. Currently, the transmission lines are dealt with by 1041 regulations. I don't know that that's necessary, but that's something that we want to talk about with the staff and figure out where it makes sense.
Right now, they're not really regulated by any federal or state, the gathering lines, right? They're not covered?
The Public Utilities Commission does regulate most, certainly the oil pipelines.
Okay.
Some of the gas gathering lines are not.
I think the question before us is, should staff look into this?
Yeah.
And develop some recommendations? And I believe the direction, should pipelines be addressed in the regulations? I think the answer is yes, and we're directing them to look into this more and come back to us. I don't think we're going to work it out tonight.
Okay, okay, Mr. Chair. I just have, I've been doing a little bit of reading. I just had some couple of points I just wanted to make, so.
Yes, your points are well received. Thank you.
So, move on to the next issue. This is a Class II waste injection wells. There are two types of injection wells, Class II UIC injection wells. These are regulated by the state. The Coal and Gas Conservation Commission recognizes these in conjunction with federal regulations. And the two types of wells are, one injection well is injecting to dispose of waste from oil and gas development. The other type is to inject to try to energize or recover some oil from a field that needs that, to be able to surface that oil. They inject water into it to bring that oil to the surface. What we're, what I would propose, that certainly both types would be considered an oil and gas facility, but maybe some specific regulations, specific to the Type II UIC wells for waste injection are appropriate. There are some jurisdictions that I've worked with in the past and that I know of in the state of Colorado that limit those. Some exclude them entirely, and some limit them to industrial locations, that is industrial zoned areas. There, we would want to work with the staff to make sure that this is something that makes sense. You don't, the risk of eliminating them entirely would mean that there would be more water trucks potentially on the surface, you know, that are taking water, this wastewater, over to the closest waste injection wells, which may be as far as Weld County. And, you know, there's trade-offs to not having these injection wells located within Larimer County.
Can you state that last statement again, that you just said?
There are trade-offs, you know, both positive and negative, I would say, towards having a ban on new waste injection wells. There are currently two waste injection wells that I'm aware of from the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission website.
Is there technology on the horizon to address some of this wastewater and stuff in the future? That maybe truck traffic isn't going to be much of a concern?
There is technology now, it's just prohibitively expensive compared to injecting it underground. You certainly could require them to clean and reuse that water, but you would only want to reuse it for other oil and gas development, whether you're putting it into drilling muds or hydraulic fracking fluids. It's not, or, you know, re-injecting it to energize those old oil and gas wells. It's not something that you would be able to put into a creek, or, you know, certainly use for domestic purposes.
So staff's not, doesn't want to ban them, but they want to put more additional regulation on?
I would like to look at the location of those and the need for injection wells, and see if it would be appropriate to limit them more than they are currently in the current regulations. Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I think we should look at regulating them more. Did you say that they could be limited to maybe heavy industrial zones? I mean, would that provide some protections, I think? I think that that might be something to look at, because I do, I mean, you know, I understand that there's options to bring it to Weld County. That's a little disturbing to me, to take our, but, I mean, you know, I don't know. I don't know what my fellow commissioners are thinking.
Um, I, I understand staff's hesitancy to ban, but I definitely would want to see what we can do to limit them as much as possible. And I do wonder if technology is going to be coming, you know, if the future, there's possibility for us to have different ways of treating this, that maybe the cost will come down and have that opportunity to be able to not have it injected in the meantime, because we might in the future have ways to deal with this, is something I'd like to consider. So, but, you know, I think, I'd like to see what staff could come up with in the next two weeks.
And we'll look into those technologies as well.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, I would raise a point that, you know, sometimes we think of Larimer County, we think of the urbanizing areas and whatnot. In Larimer County, there's really only too high and heavy industrial sites that you probably are going to find. One of them is where our current landfill is, and one of them's where the Pro's landfill's going to go, and maybe rawhide power plant. So there's limited space in Larimer County that's currently zoned as heavy industrial, so it'd be somewhat limiting in location, and that may be appropriate, but, you know, it's kind of scattered. We would have to sit down with a zoning map and understand where those locations are.
Well, how much truck traffic would we be talking about? Like, I mean, I have no idea, I'd have no sense of the scope of how much, I mean, is it, are we talking about several trucks a day from each site? Are we talking about, I mean, what, I mean, how much increase would we be talking about?
And that is really going to depend on the type of oil and gas development in the area. If there's a lot of new oil and gas development in the area, which we're not forecasting, and they are producing a lot of water at those locations, you could have a lot of truck traffic. There are locations outside of Brighton that are experiencing 200 trucks a day. You know, that's in and out, and every day. However, we're not seeing a lot of that right now. A lot of these injection wells are very specific to one operator, and so if a operator needs an injection well, they may very well find it valuable to pipe that water to that location, so you're not really dealing with any truck trips, but you are still dealing with an injection well there, which can and has caused some slight seismic activity, even as close as Greeley in the last six years.
I know, I'm thinking, I think you and I are thinking the same thing.
I mean, increased truck traffic may be preferable to increased seismic activity. And if we're not, I mean, if we're not talking about having something on the scale of what Brighton has, I don't know that we should have that at all.
Yeah.
Well, then we'll look at the amount of need for additional injection wells, and look at the possibility of not allowing it. Again, you know, that's your call.
Is there any, besides seismic activity, are there any other health issues we should be aware of? Is, I mean, is there groundwater contamination issues? I mean, what are some other issues that arise from this?
Yeah, so, I would say that the biggest impact is going to be the truck traffic, and the possibility of these trucks spilling over and then contaminating water that way. Certainly, there is some spillage at the location, but they're equipped, it's a location that expects that, and it's equipped for it, and it doesn't cause any concerns. And in fact, injection wells are now regulated to the extent where we're not seeing the kind of seismic activity we did six years ago. It's just a possibility. Even in Greeley, they're not experiencing that kind of seismic activity that they were, and they only had two seismic events that you could actually feel all the rest were something that were so subtle that you couldn't experience it yourself. It had to be picked up by a seismic grab.
Matt, did that have a lot to do with the pressure that they were putting the wells under?
It's both the pressure that they're putting the wells under, knowing that there's faults underneath where they were injecting the water. You essentially don't want to have to lubricate those faults that exist there, because that can ultimately lead to some slippage and a little bit of seismic activity. Again, we're not seeing that anywhere near the scale of Oklahoma, and since we started regulating it four years ago, that incidence had almost disappeared in the state of Colorado.
May I ask a question of Chris Manley about this kind of water and contamination with the site that I asked some information about with the water, what that's kind of put into that? I mean, this is kind of similar, but different. Could you, can you remind me how much contamination, or what kind of things we've experienced with that?
With, specifically with the site?
With that Wellington water that, because are they injecting it back in, or just discharging it, right?
No, so that one is a little bit different.
Okay.
That one is a treatment process. It is, it's shallow disposal, so it's not the same scale that an underground injection well would be.
But are we seeing any contamination with the groundwater in that area, or have we seen any?
No, as far, up to now, they've met permit conditions for all the testing that they had to complete.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that reminder. I'm trying to, trying to remind myself of what you had just sent me a couple of days ago.
Commissioner Shadak McNally, that field is, the Wellington fields are predominantly water.
Yeah.
That do bring out, and then they cause separation of the water in the oil. Um, that do bring out and then they cause separation of the water and the oil. And then what they're doing is they're running through a treatment plant all the, the water and it's treated basically to a, a, to a certain level and then water is discharged, so it's really uncontaminated, um, resulting water. And that's why it's a surface pond there, or what do they call it, a? Yeah.
Okay, a gallery?
Basins, yeah.
Okay.
And so it's not like what we're talking about, taking produced water that's got waste built into it, injecting it into the wells, yes.
Okay, thanks, I'm just trying to, trying to picture these, um, and I knew they were different, but I, I didn't know what that kind of, if there was any contamination from the water that they're releasing, so. Um, I, I would like to look at how we, I don't know, what do you think Commissioner Stevens? Are you, are you, um, thinking, trying to see how much we can limit it or you wanted to see if we can eliminate it?
Um, this is like choosing the two bad, which, which bad thing is worse? Um, uh, yeah, I, I don't know that I know yet, but I do think that there, if we're going to look at them, we should have, they should be heavy, heavily regulated. Um, I mean, I, I, I see the idea of a, a truck that's carrying this that spills over is not a good scenario either. And so, um, I, and I don't know how much input we've had on this, but, um, I, I guess I'd be willing to, to have them here, but to, to have, heavily regulate those. Um, I don't know what other communities have done. Do we have any other communities that have, that have wrestled with this and come to some sort of (laugh) good solution?
We've, I, I could look into that. Um, I could look into that, uh, the majority of municipalities that I've worked with, um, have banned them.
Have banned them?
Yeah, but again, I, I, I think that a municipality is kind of in a different place than a county, uh, in that, you know, we're expecting those to be more or less residential. Um, you know, having an industrial waste facility maybe, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense for most municipalities, uh, where it might, uh, there's certainly a need for waste facilities in counties. There's a need for all sorts of waste facilities, including, uh, waste injection wells potentially. Uh, but we can look at those trade offs, how many trucks we might be talking about, uh, the potential for contamination and some of those trade offs.
And maybe further limiting locations, like if we can't just, um, you know, limit it to heavy industrial because there's too few places that fit that bill, if there were, you know, other limitations that we could use that would make sure that we kept it away from, you know, areas where there were so, a lot of folks living, because clearly it's a concern.
Four to five years that I've been the local government designated on oil and gas, there's only been one spill and it was actually a, a truck that was bringing, uh, produced fluids from Grand County on the other side of the Continental Divide down the Pooter Canyon and, um, went around a curve too tight and, and dumped his, not into the river, but onto a, on a dual property and it had an immediate clean up on that. I think that you guys might have been affiliated with that, so there was immediate notice. That was the only one that we've received any kind of notice on.
So maybe just more, a little more information on this one?
I, I, I would like more information, but I'd like to see what we can do to limit that, let, you know, the injection wells, because I, um, ban and waste inj- not ban, but how we can really limit the waste injection wells and kind of that information between how many trucks and what we're looking at, you know, going forward to see how far we want to go with that, so.
Uh, another way to limit it is to, to state that they can only be used if you're piping water to those locations. Uh, that would limit it to, uh, operators that are producing the water, uh, to creating their own injection wells. Uh, again, we would have a lot of citing requirements for those wells, but, um, that would almost eliminate all the truck traffic, uh, to and from those locations.
So, if I might, Mr. Chair, um, has there been any, um, contamination issues anywhere, anywhere else in Colorado with these injection wells or these sites?
No, that, not that I'm aware of. Um, certainly there are spills in every location, but those are cleaned up. And the area that the geology that they're injecting into are typically a half a mile, quarter mile, uh, deeper than where they're getting oil and gas. So we're talking about seven thousand to nine thousand feet below the surface. Uh, nowhere near where our drinking water comes from, which is either on the surface or in the groundwater, which is, you know, probably no deeper than thirteen hundred feet.
Could you remind me, do we accept, I heard you say the truck came down, we're not, but mostly we're going out to, shipping out to Greeley. We're not, are we, have any history of accepting any of that waste here?
If it's a commercial facility, they would, they would have, there would be no reason not to.
Private?
Yeah.
There's a private?
I don't know where that, that truck was going, whether it was going to Weld County or not. It just, the spill occurred in Laramo County and we received notice.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, um, so moving on to the next issue. There's been some concern, uh, that Article eleven, which deals with oil and gas, it doesn't specifically state that, uh, the county has the authority to deny any oil and gas application that does not protect public health, safety, welfare, environment and wildlife resources. Now, there are clear, uh, indications in, uh, the regulations for special use permits that do state that the county can, uh, deny an oil and gas permit. Um, it doesn't specifically say, um, because public health, safety, welfare and the environment is, is not adequately protected. Um, I don't think that it's necessary, but it is something that comes up, um, continuously in our public meetings. Again, I think that, um, the special use permit, um, makes it more than clear that you have authority to deny, uh, to protect the public health. It doesn't specifically say public health, safety, welfare and the environment.
And what, is it okay just to add that sentence? What would be the drawback from adding something like that?
Uh, you'd be adding it to, um, a provision that is used for all sorts of uses beyond oil and gas development. Uh, special use, um, permits are, are used in other applications and other land use applications.
So you're recommending against adding that we would not be able to, that the Board of County Commissioners could deny the oil and gas?
Uh, I'm, I'm recommending that it's not necessary. I also think that we could add language like this specifically to Article eleven and not have it applied generally to all special use permits, um, to, to address this issue. I would also then want to clarify that, um, natural areas are going to be treated a little bit differently as well and there's a different criteria for those to protect some of those natural features, um, scenic values and recreational values that, that you all have invested so heavily in.
Um, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would like to add that in the Section eleven, just that short statement, just to, because we've heard a lot about it from the community too, it comes up again and again, so, um, I might add to something else, because this is where one of my questions-
You asked a question, would you like us to?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see that in the Section eleven. Um, so then that, so, Chris, do you have a question? Because I was going to talk about-
Well, you asked us if we agree with that.
Oh, do you, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I do, as well.
To be specific to the Article eleven, where it needs to, that, that is my opinion.
Great, thank you.
Please carry on.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I've, I'm, I, I, I just realized you're going to address one of my questions, so I'm very excited about it. I brought this up before, you're all smiling at me, but the national areas zoning, um, I see that question. We haven't, no one has applied for that yet, correct? And so, like, I'm confused about the zoning of that. If we, do people have to apply for that? Are we going to, are, are, do they have to apply for that zoning? Or we, or, or is it going to be applied to them directly in those certain areas? I mean, I know certain areas like Rocky Mountain and our national areas, um, so...
Do you want to take that, Matt Lefferty? The question is about natural areas and the, how, if they need to be applied for, um, or if there are natural areas currently existing in the, in the county.
Nothing right now is zone natural resources. It will all have to be either applied for or we would have to pro, uh, administer it on a legislative basis, which means the Board of County Commissioners could come in and manually rezone properties that they see fit to fit that definition and typically don't do that without property under consent. But, for instance, we own a lot of natural resources properties. And so if the county so saw that to be appropriate, we could go in and have those properties rezoned to natural resources. Other communities like Fort Collins who have, and Loveland that have natural resources within the county could also come forward and ask to have their, um, properties given that designation or the Forest Service or whatnot.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not talking about private right now.
Nope, just public land.
Just public lands, I mean, we have it and we have, and, and forgive me if maybe I'm just not understanding this or grasping this. We have this designation of any development of natural areas and it's talking about, you just talked about natural areas in, in general, but we have this zoning, natural areas zoning, right? So are you talking to natural areas in general or natural areas zoning in this question?
Ultimately, uh, it was intended for the natural resource areas. Um, and recognizing that there are a number of them that I think the staff assumes are going to be put into that category, uh, Soapstone being an example, um, you know, others that the county owns. My sense is that, that those are natural and could benefit from, from that designation. But, again, this is, this is kind of a placeholder, recognizing that it's not yet going to be useful.
Um, go ahead Frank.
Sorry, and I don't think, I think that there's a couple of tools you can use. You know, one, one of them is you can define natural area probably however you, in a different way, right? I mean, there's a zoning natural area that you could say, in the zoning natural area, you're only going to, you're going to have to meet X, Y, Z criteria to develop your well. But you could also say, in areas where there are additional natural resources that we want to protect and you could enumerate, you know, this far from a stream, this, this, you know, conservation easement, protection, whatever criteria you wanted to have, you could say that and then say, in those areas, you still have to meet criteria X, Y, Z. So whether it's in this new natural area zone or whether you define it in a different way, I think you can put additional criteria in those areas that you identify as needing additional protection.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, do we, do we need to be, so, I, I, I know that I'm worried about, I, I see it under section, this one section, um, three, eleven point three point two setbacks towards location restrictions, I see a cross up there. And I highlighted here, oil and gas locations shall only be located within the following zoning districts without obtaining a variance under Section six point seven point three. And it has natural resources, I don't know if that's the same as natural areas, forestry, agriculture, agricultural, commercial, open and, I mean, all these different ones. So is that the same, natural resources the same as the natural areas or are we talking two different?
Those, those zone districts, I believe that, that Mr. Sir and us put into the regulations was, we contemplated, how can zoning do this? And, and zoning may not be the best tool, that may be a rotten tool. We haven't settled on that issue yet. Um, it'd help if you guys helped us on this. Um, those zone districts are predominantly the very rural parts of Laramo County where you have less residential development, you're, you're more spread out, you find more of our agricultural community. It's probably more appropriate for those land use areas to accommodate oil and gas facilities and that's why we've identified those.
Okay, um, so Frank, you're recommending that we could go ahead and set extra criteria for these natural areas like, that, you know, like our camping area, you know, our camping areas or our trails or, you know, those natural resources so far from streams and all those things. Are you, so you're suggesting that natural areas have a different set of criteria? And you're saying maybe we need to go ahead and designate certain areas as natural area zoning, just to help with that?
Maybe, or maybe not. It may be, for instance, I'll, um, I'll give you an example. Um, you, you brought it up just now. If, if there was a trailhead with a, a trailhead parking lot and a trail in an area, um, one of the suggestions that came out of the regulations was that we apply a setback from those because those are active recreational use areas. But there may be natural resource properties or there may be just areas of the county that are vastly wide open, um, that really, um, you might want to protect from a natural resources area or you may want to say in those areas that the standard is lesser because it really is not a high impact. And so to that point, when, uh, we had some conversations with Boulder County, trying to understand some of the hurdles that they went through in, in Boulder County, they, they originally were talking about banning oil and gas operations on natural resources facilities, properties that the town, that the county owned for natural resources. And what they found out that that might not be the best choice, that that might be the best choice to put an oil and gas facility because it leaves an agricultural property adjacent to it unaffected by, um, production and, and leaves that ag property, um, more usable for ag. So there's, there, it, it's, it's just weighing the scales out on this. I think that protecting our, our public who are using natural resources properties on trails and other things like that, or a park or playground or something like that, those deserve to have the conversation, do we apply a setback from them, um, to protect people in those situations?
And just, just quickly, you know, there's two separate things, right? There's regulating through the zoning tool, saying you can only have it in X, Y, Z zone, in A zone or B zone or Z zone. And then they're saying, there's a trailhead here, whatever zone it's in, doesn't matter what zone it's in, there's a trailhead here, we want to regulate additionally because it's close to a trailhead. You could direct staff to do both of those things, right? You could say, I want additional regulations in these certain zone districts and I want additional regulations when it's close to a trailhead or when it's close to a river or what, whatever, you know. Um, so I don't think it has to be an either or type of thing. The other thing to just keep in mind is historically, things have all been open, right? I mean, I forget what, like ninety percent or ninety-five percent of the county was zoned open. And so, the reason a lot of this stuff is on probably open zoned land. And so that is why the zoning tool may not be the most effective tool if you want to capture some of these other areas.
Good point. What do my colleagues think about that? I mean, I know I keep kind of picking on this, but then about natural, do, does natural areas zoning and do we do both of, you know, the trailheads or kind of the special areas like that and also just address this natural, um, areas zoning issue? Do both or either or or just kind of see what staff comes back with?
Turn your mic on.
Uh, thank you, Justine, uh, if I understood our, uh, Frank, uh, we, with regard to, uh, natural resources zoning districts, we could, uh, uh, provide for more protections in those areas. Um, and also if it's a specific situation like was discussed, a trailhead, we could, we can also accommodate that. So I think we should look at both of those, if, if I'm making sense.
I, you know, I, I guess I like the idea of, um, only allowing oil and gas in some zoning districts just because I feel, I, I feel pretty strongly that there's areas that shouldn't have what I would consider heavy industrial in those areas. And so, um, I think that, that, I think that zoning districts sort of protects, and there again, you know, things like manufactured housing parks and, I mean, you know, multi-family residential, I mean, those, to me, that, I've, I've probably expressed my opinion quite a bit on how I don't feel like it belongs. Those, um, oil and gas development don't belong, um, you know, alongside homes. And, I mean, to me, it is a heavy industrial use and so I, I like the idea of limiting it to certain zones. And with, with the added protections of, you know, setbacks from trailheads and, and heavily used areas and the, the setbacks that we've decided from waterways and different kinds of, you know, and so, um, that, I, to me, that's, that would be the best way to, to, um, to handle that.
Thank you.
So colleagues, I, I mean, this is the first time we, we haven't really got to talk, just I might just, since I've got to talk, um- Um, d- um, Mr. Lafferty said we could, um, design, we could maybe designate certain areas, residential zoning areas or something, we could go in areas, we could go and pick certain areas, like let's say we just pick horseshoe mountain, open mountain space and say that's a, I don't know if that qualifies as a natural area and that's not any certain setbacks from that or soapstones, um, I, I don't know, Little Thompson River area. I don't, I mean, I'm just thinking.
But that, that's really a separate deal because I think what you're talking about is you're rezoning a parcel of land and that's a whole separate step procedure you have to go through.
Okay.
That's not something you would do through this oil and gas legislative process. You have to zone particular parcels in a particular way and there's a lot of notice and, um, procedure involved in that. So that would be a separate procedure.
But putting the, that language in the regulations now has that language in case we do end up zoning those areas?
You could identify a zone and say we only want it in this zone or that zone, you know.
Okay.
But, but then whether the parcel is that zone or not that zone is a decision that's made separately.
Okay.
Yeah, and that might happen in twenty years, it might happen next year, it might never happen.
We have the ability to protect those areas that are publicly owned, you know, have scenic value and we could even list them, you know, if we wanted to in the regulation. I mean, there are ways to, to protect the areas that we're looking for. And, and maybe it's just different, what we're suggesting is that there's a different level of protection, that those areas may be appropriate for some oil and gas development, but it's only going to be, um, done with the guidance of, of staff, of a natural resources staff and in a way that is not going to be detrimental to the wildlife and scenic values that we've, you know, that you've all invested so heavily in.
Okay.
And isn't it correct that, I mean, these applications would go through a special review process? And ultimately, if we determine that the criteria are not met, then the Board of Commissioners has the authority to say, uh, you need to amend your proposal or, or it's not going to be approved. Isn't, isn't that correct?
That's correct and what we're proposing is some additional criteria for some yet as, you know, undefined natural areas that we know that the Natural Resources Department wants to see protected, um, that we've heard you say very clearly and the public say very clearly that you want to have protected. Great. Okay, excellent.
Sorry, I didn't put my mind, lots of criteria there from, from my, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, moving on to the fourth issue, although we did already cover the fifth issue on zoning, so that's a little bonus. Um, this is really going to, uh, the two thousand foot setback. And what is being put, put forward in the discussion draft is something that, that is a parallel of the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission regulations, which have a two thousand foot setback with off ramps that allow for closer than that in the following circumstances. One, if they get a waiver from every affected resident less than two thousand feet or the other, if they can demonstrate that the protections are substantially equivalent to a two thousand foot setback. Unlike the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission, which allows them to locate as close as five hundred feet, uh, we still have, um, you know, that firm, strong setback of a thousand feet saying that, that there's really only one way that you could be any closer than, uh, a thousand feet to a home and that is to get a waiver. There's no showing of substantially equivalent protections, there's no hearing before the commission. You can't get the waiver, you can't show up and have a hearing. There's just no, there's no getting around that.
That sentence can, can demonstrate the protections are substantially equivalent to two thousand.
Turn your mic on.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Can, the sentence can demonstrate that the protections are quote unquote substantially equivalent to two thousand foot setback. What, what is substantially equivalent, what, will we have criteria under there? And will we have the ability to say that doesn't meet those are criteria? And we don't agree that that's substantially equivalent or what standards are we, I mean, that sentence makes me, um, think really hard about that.
Yeah, you and the rest of the state.
Yeah.
So this is mirroring the, um, the, the language, the specific language of the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission, meaning that the Coal and Oil and Gas Conservation Commission are having these same discussions and are going to be doing that same waving, uh, wa- weighing of the evidence. Is this substantially equivalent protections for, for noise regulations, uh, odor regulations, transportation? Is someone that is eighteen hundred feet away from this location, can we put some noise regulations that it'll be as if they were more than two thousand feet? And I would say if you're looking at some, you know, somebody is eighteen hundred feet away, yeah, you could probably do that and that might be quite easy. If you're twelve hundred feet or a thousand feet away, it's going to be very difficult because you have to look at the lighting, the noise, everything else suddenly becomes a real issue. However, if it's a thousand feet and it happens to be on the other side of a, of a berm and there's really no way to see it or hear it, to smell it, um, it might be quite easy. So it's really a, a fact specific, location specific analysis.
So is COGCC looking to define this term or develop a, a, you know, more objective criteria to?
My sense is, is that they're going to do it, um, site by site analysis. You know, as, as you're probably in a better position to be able to do than the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission and because we're requiring they come through the county first, you do this analysis, you say it doesn't meet that requirement, then it's going to be very difficult for them to make that case at the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission. Giving you the first bite at the apple gives you more power in this discussion and defining that term.
One of the reasons why you don't get real specific on this and you, you don't say this is the criteria or this is, you could have some criteria, but substantially equivalent leaves the decision to you guys as to what's appropriate. Um, so it, it, it gives the industry the opportunity to pitch alternatives and they, it, there may be two years from now, there's a far better technology than we have today on a particular thing and they could say, we're going to use this technology and that's substantially equivalent to or better than what's there, then you can make that decision. But if you pin it down to specific things, those are the only things that we're, that it applies to. The other thing that I think Matt Sura had mentioned one other time was, you know, if you've got a large landowner who's got a big farm and he's irrigating it or he's doing something with it, he may want it closer, right? He may want it in a different location because it's better for his agricultural operation. And so if you say, no, it's gotta be two thousand feet and that puts it right in the middle of his field, so he can't irrigate it anymore, there's a cost to him for that. So the, the concept is to give you guys the discretion and the authority to say, yeah, that makes sense or no, that doesn't make sense in this particular circumstance. And, and the, uh, the thing to think about too is what's, what's being sort of thought about is who are the decision makers, right? And in this case, both the landowner and res- and resident, it's his landowner and resident, are a decision maker because they have to give a waiver and then you all also have to give permission to do it. So it's sort of two sided, right? There's two parts to it. So I think that's important to point out. Right, and then the state has to permit it.
So you're saying, this t- go ahead, did I?
No, I, I was just checking, but please.
Oh, um, so the two thousand setback, it's not a hard two thousand foot setback you're saying because you feel like there's these outlying rural areas that might need to have some, uh, ab- ability for us to use discretion to decide maybe it's better in this place over here. And so I'm trying, trying to reflect back what you're telling me. So if they secure a waiver from everybody, or, or can it be and? Instead of or, can it be and, just, you know, demonstrate these are substantially equivalent, um, less than two thousand since we're not doing a hard two thousand. Um, can, would we have a hard time as the Board of County Commissioners? I mean, if they satisfy both of those, are we saying that we, we would not be able to deny that then? Or is this just a, an off ramp that if you can do A and B, then this can be considered? Just want to make sure I'm understanding.
And they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the way it's written now and, and Matt wrote it, so he should probably answer the question, but is that it, you have to have one of two things, right? The standard is two thousand foot setback. Everybody's at two thousand feet. The only way you get closer than that is either one, you get the waiver from the landowner and residents, that's one road. The other road is you prove that it's substantially equivalent to you guys. But to get less than a thousand feet, you have to have both. Is that accurate?
Uh, not necessarily. I think if you're going to be less than a thousand feet, you don't get the or. You basically have to just get the waiver. There's no, there's no making a showing that, um, would allow them to be closer than a thousand feet to someone that doesn't want it that close.
But they still have to get the board's permission to do it.
They would still have to get the board's permission to do it. It wouldn't fall under this language though, they would still need to go through and make a showing.
I have a question.
Please.
Where it says secure a waiver from residents living two thousand feet from proposed oil and gas facility. Um, does that im- imply homeowners or could that also, if there are renters in the vicinity, would you speak to that, sir?
Um, that, this is an issue that has come up and that is, uh, an area that we were looking to expand to require both the homeowner, that is, the, you know, the property owner as well as any, any tenants that are living there.
And the tenants, the rent-
Yeah, I think I brought this up, did I bring this up last week?
It's been, yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, I think I brought it, yeah. I asked about the renters, yeah.
That's right.
So, so that in, does include folks that are renting?
Yeah.
Thank you for answering my que- question.
Sure.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Chris-
So, and it's twenty five hundred feet, is it from daycare centers or nursing homes? Is, is, does that get expanded, that, um, the setback? Is it, or is it still two thousand feet from those kind of?
It, it does get expanded and the way that it gets expanded is that it's to the, uh, property boundary. So a school property boundary would be the playground, the soccer fields, any, um, the periphery of that property rather than the home structure itself. So, uh, in effect, it's adding, you know, some number of feet, it could be five hundred, it could be fifty. But, um, there's going to be some additional, uh, distance that's added from that.
Okay. I mean, um, can we, you know, um, one of my concerns is sort of, um, people who are, um, impacted by this, people, um, in affordable housing and, and could we put provisions for, um, those kind of further setbacks from affordable housing units and, um, multifamily?
I think you could do that. I think you could also do it by density, you know? I mean, if you had sort of a, a single family home as opposed to some kind of, like you said, a, a multiple family unit, I think to me that would be a reasonable way to do it.
I just have concerns about disproportionately affected people being, you know, um, you know, people, there again, maybe people who are living in, in poverty or living, you know, um, below the poverty line already have bad health outcomes and, um, you know, having that be exacerbated by being located close to a industrial facility. So like if we can add some protections in for folks that might not normally be protected because they're, they're more at risk, um, that would be helpful to me. And I don't know what that looks like, but it seems like the, the Oil and Gas Commission was allowing for environmental justice. You know, they, they've discussed that. To me, that's an environmental justice issue and I'd like to see a way to, to address that.
But-
I, I'm noticing that in, in section eleven point two point two, County Review Process, there is a reference to disproportionately impacted, uh, communities is, I mean, we, we just need, we, we reference it here, but we don't provide much detail. So it seems like this is an important, a bit of information that ought to be provided as part of the preliminary site analysis. Perhaps, uh, we need to make sure that it's clear what kind of information, uh, we're asking for and maybe that's a policy thing.
Well, so the way that the code is written prior is that, uh, all of the definitions are defined at the Coal and Ca- Conservation Commission and so we haven't changed that. Um, if you wanted to get a little bit more finer grained, uh, on the definition of disproportionately impacted communities or specific to, um, you know, a building, um, you know, and, and defining that as disproportionately impacted, uh, we could do that. It's just, it's going to take some work, uh, among the staff to try to be creative as to how we define those and, and what makes it different than what is defined by the EPA. It, it's really difficult because you get this disproportionately impacted community status and they're looking at these different units or populations. And that population based, if you've got a low, uh, density population, that disproportionately impacted community could be six square miles. You know, and so an entire six square miles is suddenly a disproportionately impacted community and it's not, it's not truly getting at what you're trying to affect is to stay away from those homes.
I wonder, you know, looking at the health department folks and thinking, you know, there's already probably mapping on where people have, where we have health disparity in our county and I'm sure that that could help us. I'm not trying to redefine disproportionately. It may look slightly different in our community because we have a smaller, um, minority populations than other, you know, um, than other areas. So, you know, to me, poverty, you know, people of color often would fall into that category, but also I would say people living in extreme poverty, no matter what their race would also be. And I think that looking at some of the health maps could, would kind of help us determine that. So that's, that, there is my, like a big fear is sort of that this, these sites get pushed off to people who don't normally have a voice and, you know, I, I don't want that to happen. So any way we can protect folks in our county that, that might have, um, more, have less of a voice and more health concerns with this kind of industrial sighting, um, near them, that, that, I, I would like to find a way to find protections for those folks.
I, I, um, I think that you're, that's one of the things I was going to bring up too, Kristen, is, is those, um, adding that to the list, um, we have this list now, maybe this has changed, um, you're talking about adding it to the two thousand, make it twenty five hundred. Um, right now it says two thousand from any school facility or childcare center, do we list that out with that area? And right now it says two thousand, but you're saying we could, we could put twenty five hundred for schools and childcare centers and nursing homes or can we do that? And I know you, I know you said two thousand, maybe with the door, it's not from the door, it's from the property line, but there might be one of those facilities, like I'm just thinking about the one I visited in a small community to, uh, a nursing home facility and that property line is not five hundred feet. So I was wondering if we could say twenty five, you know, hundred feet for some of those facilities or, or the, or the, or the property line, whichever is gr- you know, whatever is twenty five hundred or greater because I was just thinking about that nursing home facility, it's not, it doesn't have a twenty five hundred or a five hundred setback for a parking lot or anything. So there's those exceptions that maybe those schools or the, um, childcare facilities that are, you know, don't have a big long parking lot that, um, the property line wouldn't be five hundred feet.
Ultimately, the number that gets put in the code is at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners to help us with. I think the advice that we would get from our council is that we make sure that the nexus and the rationale behind what that setback is, is something that we can defend or we're willing to make, you know, cause. And right now, the reason why two thousand keeps popping up is that was based upon the last health study that was done, um, that a lot of people are relying on that number for, if I'm not incorrect. And so that's where the two thousand resonated with the state. Some go beyond that, that's, but we need to be cognizant that when we reach out beyond those things, that we have some linkage to, to there being a nexus for that reasoning.
Well, it seems like it's, that the nexus is vulnerable populations with-
Nursing homes also.
Potentially preexisting conditions that could be exacerbated by, by industrial operations to me. I mean, but I, I'm not an expert, but I mean, that, to me, that would be the, 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 the reason to, to use those facilities.
Just because you, I know that you've seen the comparison sheet, um, that would be the farthest, uh, in the sta- Just because you, I know that you've seen the comparison sheet, um, that would be the farthest, uh, in the state. Boulder County has a recommendation of twenty-five hundred, but in actuality, the, the regulation's really clear that it's a two thousand foot setback as, is being proposed here. Um, Brumfield just looked at that and, and also landed on the two thousand feet, as did Adams County. So, um, just for, for your reference as to, to what other local governments are doing.
If I may, I, I'm noticing that Boulder County has a two thousand foot setback footnote, with a quote, "Stated preference for twenty-five hundred feet." What does that mean?
I have no idea.
Pardon?
I don't think that it means, um, much of anything.
When we discussed it with them, when we had our meetings and discussed it with them, they said, "We prefer to have it twenty-five hundred, but there's nothing to say that somebody couldn't come in it, two thousand," because that's their regulation.
Okay.
Does that buy them space as commissioners then to, um, say, well, we, I mean, does it give them any power to be able to say, "That's not twenty-five hundred, and that's what we prefer, so we're gonna, you know, reject this application?" Or is it just sort of-
Well, one way that, that it might work is when you're weighing the different options through an alternative location analysis, you could say, "Well, you know, we've said that there's a stated preference to keep it farther away from these locations, and therefore, even though, you know, you're gonna be closer to a river corridor in this, in this area, um, we would prefer to have it there rather than within twenty-four hundred feet of this disproportionately impacted community." So, that, that would be a, a place that that could be helpful.
I mean, that might be a way to address that, that, that.
And, and there may be, you know, practical considerations, like you may have a nursing home that's twenty-five hundred feet away from a huge oil and gas development, and the wind, prevailing wind, blows constantly at that thing all the time. I mean, there may be sort of site-specific factors that you wanna think about, as to why that might be appropriate in some particular circumstance. And if I'm remembering right, in our original draft that we had put together, that existed, we had some kind of language in there that said effectively, you know, "In certain circumstances, if the board finds that there are particular dangerous aspects to some particular development, the board might say, 'You need to be farther away,'" you know, and so I think that that language did exist. I think that's something we could look at on a site-specific thing. Rather than having to set twenty-five hundred for everybody, again, you may have a circumstance where it makes sense to be farther away because of the size, or the pollutants, or whatever thing. And, and you were correct, Frank, and, and we did that in both directions. We said a thousand, which in this case, let's call it two thousand for the sake of conversation, two thousand is the target we want it to be. You shouldn't be less than that, should, you don't have to be more than that, unless circumstances would suggest otherwise. And so, if the suggestion otherwise is you feel that it's too close to a certain community, or to a certain use or whatnot, and you feel better that it moves back three or four hundred feet, then that's at your discretion to make that decision. If you agree that they've done something exceptional to allow them to dip below the two thousand, that gives you the discretion to do that. And some people understand that in the process of land use, discretion is important because it's not, there are unique circumstances all over the place, and you can set a finite number, but when you do that, it's really hard to administer because of that.
I, I guess I kind of like that language of the twenty-five hundred was preferred, and, and then look back at, you know, what you just said about the persp- the language we had in the specific. Is there some kind of, um, language you can meld together that kind of addresses that? Does that make sense? Because I, I guess my point is, there's some of these facilities that not every school, not every, I think about, well, like, a high school, huge high school, um, parking lot, lots of, you know, lots of, not even near the door. But I think for these smaller schools, or the nursing homes, they're just, it, it, that property line's not as big. And so, I'm just wondering how we can build in those protections so that we can have that, um, I want to say flexibility, that we have those tools and that criteria to say, "This, this population's vulnerable, needs extra protections." You know, children, our older adults, um, that are, you know, you know, a lot of them have breathing issues and, and on oxygen. So, I, I just wanna have those extra protections, and I know we might, might be one of the only ones in the state, but we're just trying to, I'm just trying to think about, back to what that North Star is. We're trying to look at how we protect this health, safety, and welfare, and some of those residents, especially at the pandemic, you know, we know a lot of those folks are very vulnerable, and I'm just trying to keep them in mind because they can't be here advocating for themselves. So, I'm, I'm just wondering if, that there's something we could look at that, um...
I think there is. I, I think we've got some direction there.
All right.
And we're looking at not just disproportionately impacted communities, but also schools and hospitals, and-
Nursing homes, childcare centers.
Nursing homes, yeah.
And do we need, do we have to define childcare centers versus in-home versus out-of-home? Because there's a lot of in-homes. I mean, if it's unincorporated, Laramie County, and it's, someone's got a in-home, I mean-
That, those are, those are actually part of the definition at the Colorado Conservation Commission, uh, so long as they are state licensed.
I see. May I ask, is, she's not, Leah's, you're nodding your head. I wanna hear what you have to say.
No, I would, I would completely support that. This is Leah Schneider, Environmental Health Planner. Um, right, because those in-home child cares are licensed to the state, and this is a huge, um, this is something that we're trying through our, um, chip. You guys have heard, "Community Health Improvement Plan and Affordable Child Care", and that is going more towards in-home and allowing zoning and things like that to help facilitate. So, just, just staying on that path, I really liked your thinking, and I was just really excited that people are thinking about the in-home ones, too. And to support, um, you had, um, Commissioner Stevens had asked you about public health tracking data. We definitely have access to that, too. Don't you worry.
I know that makes it more complicated for the in-home, because that could prop, you know, pop up anywhere, but I still think it's, I think we should address that, um, and have that in there somewhere because if we, we are going in that direction because we, we need more childcare slots. And I know it makes it a little more complicated, but I think it's something we should have, um, especially in the unincorporated areas that are, um, folks that's closest to their home and to their work, and so I just would like to have that addressed.
Just, just so long as, I guess, that the board's state-licensed in there, because-
Yeah.
The county has no licensing requirements for these. It's all through the state.
Yeah.
So, the only way they could be identified is through that.
Yeah.
So, if I'm operating one, and I'm not licensed, and, you know, somebody gets ninety percent of the way through the process, and I come out of the woodwork, that can be detrimental to the, to the development proposal.
No, I, I think that would, that's important to have that cri- you know, the state license and stuff, because you, you know, I think-
Then you're identifying-
Yeah, yeah. Do my colleagues think about the in-home? I see you're nodding your heads, but I haven't seen, what do you think, Commissioner Kupfer?
It sounds like it's defined that way anyway, right? Daycare, I mean, includes all state-licensed homes. So, I think that that's important to acknowledge, and, and in a lot of our rural areas and stuff, that, that's the only daycare that exists, so...
Great. Well, I think we've got some good direction there. Thank you. Um, that brings us to residential reverse setbacks from producing oil and gas wells. Current, uh, discussion draft has that setback at two hundred feet for a single vertical well, um, or a production facility, one to two wells. Uh, three to twenty-four wells, it is expanded to three hundred and fifty feet, and twenty-five or more wells is at five hundred feet. Uh, the reason for those numbers, um, there are, are good reasons for it, in that the majority of the impacts that you're going to experience from any oil and gas development happen at the drilling, completion, flowback phase. We heard that certainly from, uh, the presentation from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. We also know that that is where you experience the lights, the noise, the truck traffic. All of that industrial nature is, is happening specifically at that, um, drilling, completion, and flowback phase. Once, uh, an oil and gas location goes into production phase, if they have, uh, a pipeline that is taking both gas, of course, and then, um, liquid hydrocarbons from that location, you're not even gonna experience much truck traffic. There may be one white truck that goes there to check on the facility a day, but other than that, um, there's really not, uh, any reason for truck traffic. And there's really, if they've got it all going into a pipeline, there's really not reason for, uh, any emissions either, particularly if it's one of the new wells that has, uh, the no-bleed pneumatic valves that we heard about. Um, they're going to be monitored, uh, monthly, particularly at the beginning, uh, with leak detection and repair and, uh, forward-looking infrared cameras. Um, the new facilities are also going to be equipped with, uh, full-time monitoring, uh, air quality monitoring, continuous air quality monitoring. So, um, that's the reason that we're looking at, uh, allowing for these graduated setbacks. It's also true that if you have twenty-four wells, that if there is maintenance, um, it's likely going to, there's gonna be maintenance on more than one well. And if you are maintaining twenty-four wells, if you are recompleting twenty-four wells, that then brings that industrial nature back to that location, um, but for a briefer period than, than was experienced at the beginning. You're talking about, if you have twenty-four wells, you're talking about being there for, you know, three to four days, rather than three to four months, actually, probably more than that, um, at the drilling and completion phase. So, that's the reason for the graduated, uh, setbacks and, and for the proposal. Just to give you a sense, this is some new information that has come to us, uh, from the GIS Department in Laramie County. A two hundred foot setback would preclude, uh, about a thousand acres from residential development and affect a hundred and seventy landowners. If you were to expand that to five hundred foot buffer from active wells, um, and this is, these are, again, vertical wells that, under the proposal, would be subject to the two hundred foot setback. But if you were to expand it to five hundred feet, it would take up about five thousand acres that would be precluded from residential development affecting four hundred and sixteen landowners. So, again, because that's new information, I wanted to, to make sure that we shared that with you.
Well, I have a question about, so, once, um, once the kind of well's going, I mean, what about re-completions? Like, re, is refracking something that happens? Um, I mean, you're saying that leaks are less likely with newer technologies, um, but what, it seems like that there's times that people go back in, or to kind of shore up things that have, I've heard, and I don't know, but, uh, that have been, like, because of the seismic activity, it can affect sort of, that they, they sometimes have to go in and shore up, like, maybe, and maybe that's older wells, I don't know. But, um, are, are there many instances where somebody has to go back into a well once it's, once it's going, and, and redo things that, that caused truck traffic and, and some of these other concerns? I mean, are, are, is that com- I mean, it seems like it's fairly common, is it not?
I would say that, um, how, how common it is is gonna depend on, on the nature of the oil and gas well, but I think that you could put the expected, um, you know, re, um, regoing to the, to those, those locations, um, and being there for a period of time, uh, in, in some sort of an industrial nature would fall into three categories. One would be, um, re-completions, which we haven't seen with these new horizontally-drilled, hydraulically-fractured wells yet, frankly. They're not even sure that they can do that, but, but the expectation is that they will eventually. Um, certainly maintenance activities, if there's something that goes wrong, or if they needed to, to replace some equipment, that happens routinely. You want it to happen, you want them to be maintained, um, and it's machinery that can break down, and so, you know, may need some, some maintenance. And ultimately, you're gonna need some artificial lift as well. So, that'd be the three categories that I would see. And artificial lift, of course, is pump jacks, um, there could be, uh, some linear rod pumps. There's other technologies, but it, it does create, uh, a visual disturbance, and certainly, there can be some noise associated with those, um, those rod pumps.
So, as I understood, there, there was a study, I'm asking someone to send me that study. They, they read it off to me, but within one in five plugged wells within ten years is found to be leaking. So, there is evidence that, you know, down the road, these have had problems, and there's, I know there's one that just got, um, fined, north of Fort Collins, I think, or something that was leaking, um. So, I'm wondering with that, is there, so I, I see this scale, is there, I think we talked about that, Commissioner Stevens started my train of thought on that. When you're saying these setbacks without, without production, without, uh, production without wells, and then there's wells. Is it so many years, is it, could we have another category so that if it's so many, there's, you said that two to three years, so is it, as it gets out further along, is that, you know, kind of that sliding, you know, that they're, they're further along, there's the variance of the wells without facilities, and then as they get further out, they were not as, and they're plugged, and they haven't shown to be leaking, that there's even less risk, that it could be, those setbacks could come back or change?
Absolutely. Um, and this is some, I thought was a great idea that, that you all had, um, in an earlier conversation. It's true that these wells produce, uh, seventy-five percent of what they're going to produce over their lifetime in the first three years. So, it, it peaks like this, and then it just falls off a cliff. And there may be a way to, to resurrect these and, and to get them back to be, being more productive, but, um, they'll never be as productive as they were those initial three years. And so, if you were to extend the initial setbacks of two thousand feet, say, um, and allow for them only after the first three years of production, then to allow for development, appropriate development to come in closer than that, um, that could work. And, and that would avoid the majority of, you know, certainly the air quality impacts, but also all of that industrial nature, um, and the, the peak production of those locations.
Well, I'm just, so, that, I'm glad to hear that. So, we could start off and then have, I think Frank, you liked this idea, too, that we, it could, I'm speaking for you, I shouldn't, but Chris, it's true, Chris made this comment. I don't remember what you said, but I thought, oh, that's a great idea, that as, as it gets older and, and, and they're less productive, we could, we could have that. We could start off, since we know they're kind of, this is the, I want to say, this is the, um, exposure timer, I want to say dangerous time, but this is the most potential for, for health implications. And start off with this larger reverse setback, and as, as it gets older and, and they have this history of, of, you know, not detection of anything, we could kind of come back in. I know it makes it more complicated, but, um, it might make me feel better about that two to three-year period, because let's say someone starts something, and then there's a developer who wants to build, come in and build, and it's the only affordable housing people can find, especially in this market right now, and they build really close to this, um, facility. I just worry about in the future, affordable housing, where people are looking for land, or where they can develop, and, and if we don't have these, it's for the first five years or something, it's so they could be really close. I don't know if I'm making sense, but I, I just, I see this in my head, this kind of this different graph, and I don't, I don't know if I'm making sense at all, but do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I understand, kind of, you know, try to have farther-away setbacks when the danger is greater.
Yeah.
And then you can kind of push it back. And I wanted to go back, and I don't know if, if you, it's up to the board if you wanna go down this rabbit hole or not, but when you first started talking, you were talking about, is it the leak percentages and how the, the risk levels associated with clubs, closed wells? We have someone from the COGCC here, we have our health department here. So, you know, I don't know if you wanna ask them that question or have that conversation, but they're here, so we might as, you know-
Thanks for that reminder. Yeah, I'd like to have that conversation, and I'd like to see what they think about that idea, um, from, from everyone, if I, if that would be all right with my colleagues. What do you, what do you think about, I mean, you started my train of thought on that.
I, I would, I would like to know, and frankly, you know, some, I mean, I feel like five hundred feet still is, you know, is, it seems safer. There's, it seems than, than two hundred feet to me, because just, there, there do seem to be some concerns within the five hundred feet.
Well, he's saying even the first two years, we could do two thousand, and then work our way back. Didn't you just say that the, we could start with the-
Certainly, but the, the concern that I would have would be that there would immediately be properties that are for sale right now that all of a sudden are valueless, or certainly less value because they're being sold as residential properties that are within five hundred feet of an oil and gas well. And we're talking about those old oil and gas wells that we've got, you know, over a hundred and- And we're talking about those old oil and gas wells that we've got, you know, over a hundred and seventy of them, uh, in this county and they are being built up around. And from the, the little research that I've done, and I haven't looked at all a hundred and seventy one locations clearly, but, um, they were larger homes that were, that were being built there and million dollar properties. So, a, a, and again, I'm, I'm not making any judgments, it's just that it would be easier to apply a five hundred foot reverse setback to any new developments going forward. That is new, we, we could have even a requirement on the oil and gas operator to secure easements to allow for a five hundred foot, uh, reservation. Could be used for a lot of different uses, but it couldn't be a residential use, um, five hundred feet, you know, in perpetuity as long as that oil and gas development is there.
And, and again, I think it's valuable to hear from the health people on that, just to even get to the science. The other thing to think about is who, who are you putting the regulatory burden on? You know what I mean? To think about if what you're saying is we want the industry to make sure that their closed wells are safe, that the industry makes sure that there's sa- you know, safe procedures in place, that's one thing. The other thing is to say, we're going to put the burden on the development community to make it, uh, them demonstrate that they're safe for an already existing well. So, the, in that case, the oil and gas company doesn't have to do anything. You know, they're, they already exist, they're already there. At that point, the regulatory hurdles pass on to the development community. And so, and there's ways to think about, how do you shift that effort to the party that's really the one causing the risk? And so, I think that's a good sort of thought process to go through is, is there a way to take that risk and put it into a place where the industry is responsible for making sure that you're getting safe development?
Sorry, I'd like to hear from them, anyone who wants to say anything about this one in five within ten years is, they're plugged, they're leaking or any of, you know, that history or the, um, I forget, I've always forgotten his name. Is he still there, or gentleman?
Yeah, Sean.
Sean, Sean, I'd like to hear from what they, what folks think about this. I mean, it sounds, um, a lot to consider.
So, if, if we could, um, Commissioner Shadix McNally, if we could just talk about the setbacks from producing oil and gas wells, because the next one is going to be setbacks, appropriate setbacks from plugged and abandoned wells.
Okay, that's great. Do you want to talk about the producing wells first?
Yes.
Sure.
Sean, are you out there still available?
Yeah, I was, I was actually just trying to follow along and, um, determine, what was the specific question you're looking for my guidance on?
The specific question was, uh, dealing with, um, active oil and gas wells and, uh, appropriate setbacks if you, if you, um, know of any for, um, producing wells.
As a reciprocal setback.
So, a reciprocal setback of, of new homes being built to existing, uh, older vertical wells.
If I'm aware of any, um, well, I guess first I, I believe there are, um, I think maybe Adams County has a two hundred foot setback, if I'm not mistaken, as, as does, uh, Brighton. And then also, uh, yeah, I think maybe Commerce City has a larger one. I, I, I don't really recall what that is, I think it's significantly larger. Um, but, so, so those are ones that I'm aware of. And then another thing that I wanted to flag is, you know, and I know this isn't very satisfactory to folks because you're hoping for a, a very definitive answer on what that magic number needs to be. Um, but honestly, I don't think it's appropriate for me to answer that, largely because the two thousand nineteen human health risk assessment did not definitively define of what setback distance was necessary or reasonable, um, let alone what reverse setback distance is necessary and reasonable. And that's, um, something that Senate Bill one eighty one has specifically empowered local governments with making decisions like that. So, um, you know, that's, I know, not perhaps as helpful as some folks would, would like, but there's no such thing as a CDPHC certified or approved setback or reverse setback distance. Um, so I did just want to, uh, flag that real quick. And then I know we're going to talk about plugged and abandoned wells right, uh, here in a little bit, but one thing I kind of wanted to go back and, um, maybe respectfully ask commissioners to do is, um, I did mention the methane literature review that COGCC had conducted. Um, and I have received some feedback from, um, members of the public up there that maybe I fell short in highlighting that, um, and I would recommend that you go back and read that fully to get the full context and get the full limitations that it provides there. So, it is true that that study, the literature review concluded that emissions from plugged wells are negligible, but it also did highlight some limitations, uh, that I didn't do a good job of, of mentioning this afternoon session. Because of those limitations, it's, it's very difficult or even impossible to provide a single definitive estimate of average methane emissions from idle and plugged wells in Colorado at this time and an additional study is definitely necessary.
Thanks, Sean. And another jurisdiction that I'm aware of is Boulder County. Boulder County decided not to do reverse setbacks, um, reciprocal setbacks. And that's because Boulder County has more wells than, uh, than Larimer County does. And it would be, again, regulating the wrong community, a community that, you know, was faced with, uh, requiring, um, the state requiring them to put oil and gas facilities on their property and know that they have them. What Boulder County has decided to do is regulate them as much as possible and ensure that they're, uh, doing leak detection and repair, uh, inspections at least monthly, uh, as well as putting on a, the, the latest, uh, pollution abatement equipment as well.
I have two, uh, questions or comments, not sure what they are, which, which they are. But my first, um, question I think relates to, I think we've talked about this in the past, but relates to notification. Um, i- is, is that another way of helping to address? In other words, just like we, um, I think we passed a law a couple of years ago in the state to provide notification to prospective home buyers about mineral right issues. I- i- is that something we can do or should do, uh, to, um, make sure that people are making more informed decisions about buying homes that are close to some of these operations? That's my first question.
When we do, when we do new development in Larimer County, new subdivision proposals come through the county, we often record with those plaits a disclosure notice of things that we want homeowners to be aware of as part of the purchase of a property, um, such as wildlife issues or, or there's an oil and gas well down the street or a industrial plant over here or something that might be of, uh, concern to them as part of their decision making process. So, I think your answer is, yeah, we could do that as part of the process for approving the subdivision or something like that. So, if somebody proposes a subdivision next to an oil and gas facility, part of the requirement is to provide a disclosure notice to all lots purchasers that this exists.
It is my opinion that that would be helpful.
And then it gives them the decision to, to make of on their own?
And my second question, see how I can phrase this. Um, if we are considering, uh, higher reverse setbacks that might make it very difficult for those hundred and seventy landowners to develop their property, does that put us at greater risk of, um, you know, undermining, you know, it, the issue of property rights and all of that?
I thi- I think the answer to that is probably yes, but that's a conversation that probably involves a little bit of legal.
Probably involves what?
It would involve some legal commentary that probably would be better done if we were in a specific circumstance. You know, I don't want to go into a legal conversation about our risk levels for certain legal actions, but, but the brief answer that is yes, how much is something we could have a further conversation about?
Thank you, sufficient.
It, I mean, it depends, it depends.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, yeah, uh, Kristen, Commissioner.
With regard to the setbacks, um, like, I think the city of Fort Collins is going to start looking into that. I don't know if Loveland has anything, you know, when we're talking about areas especially, like closer to like the growth management area, I mean, should we be checking in with our municipal partners about what they're, what they're looking at too? I mean, in, in, we've done that with other land use code, you know, examples like sign code and different kinds of things where we're trying to kind of stay on the same page. Have we had any outreach in that regard?
And the interesting thing is, a lot of them are watching us right now, um, trying to figure out where are we going locally with this issue. The other thing that's, um, of benefit that came out of the rulemaking at the state, Matt will help me on this, is that notification used to, if, if a oil and gas well was going in the county, um, an application, only the county received notice and then we would send notice to our partners if we wanted to. Now, uh, if an oil and gas operation is going in neighboring property, neighboring jurisdictions within a distance are automatically notified and they're allowed to make comment through the, the COGCC process. But in, if they're going, getting an application from us as well, we're going to notify them if they're within three miles.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah, so, so, and then we would allow, you know, Loveland or Fort Collins or Berthod or Johnstown, whoever to give us comments and say, we're concerned about it from this perspective and that's part of the public hearing process for you all to make informed decisions on.
That's good information. So, may I, if I might miss the chair, um, so, proposed right now, so like, I'm listening, trying to listen to what your recommendations are. You say one county has no, um, set, reverse setbacks at all and they just have a lot more regulations for the existing facilities for future dev- you know. But I also listened to what Frank's point, which I think is a really great point. Who are we trying, who is, you know, we don't, we're not trying to punish future developers, but we're, we're trying, I don't want to say punish. We're try, trying not to put the burden on future development, but on the people that are doing the oil and gas development in the beginning, right? So, you talk about that five hundred foot, um, easement or whatever around it. So, is it, could we do something with the reverse setbacks with those easements? And/or extra little tools in the toolbox, something that Boulder County is using just to have for that flexibility or, I mean, is that getting too complicated?
Well, not at all. So, um, what we're proposing is, you know, a lot of the same protections and increased, enhanced, um, health and safety protections that Boulder County has. Uh, they decided not to do a reverse setback. I, I'm proposing a reverse setback that is, you know, um, certainly more modest, uh, than what Commerce City has, has required, but in line with virtually every other, uh, local government, including Broomfield has a, a two hundred foot setback, but requires notice up to a thousand feet. Um, so, you know, pairing some of those ideas for those existing wells. But for the new wells that come in, we could have a requirement that says, you know, we're going to be advancing because this is new oil and gas development, there's going to be more, uh, industrial nature of that oil and gas development. We're going to require a five hundred foot setback, a permanent easement for the twenty five to thirty years that you're in business and you're going to need to purchase that from adjacent landowners or find a location that is large enough to accommodate that, which would be frankly really difficult. Um, but, you know, certainly is, I think that would be putting the onus again on the industry that is creating the nuisance rather than, you know, the property owners, particularly the, what I would consider innocent property owners that didn't want this oil and gas development to be, you know, on their property twenty years ago when it occurred.
I think that all makes sense. The other thing that, I don't want to make it more complicated necessarily, but the other thing to just keep in mind is the sort of points of interception, right? I mean, you have to think about, at what point are we going to regulate this thing? Because it's one thing if an oil and gas company comes in and says, I want a permit to build my oil and gas well. And that's kind of the idea of regulating the oil and gas industry. The second part of it is, you know, with, when a developer comes in and says, I need a subdivision or I need a building permit or I need some kind of a permit from the county, right? The, the county doesn't just regulate stuff all day, every day for whatever reason they want. They regulate subdividing land, they regulate issuing building permits, they regulate those types of things. And so, that's what I mean when you think about, at what point are we going to capture this issue and try to resolve it? And so, I think that through the subdivision process, through the development process, the land use process, you can deal with a lot of it to make sure that it's a safe development. And again, like Matt's saying, but still keep the onus on the industry so that you're, you're not distributing that, that burden onto the developer unnecessarily. The problem is, you sell it, you know, I developed my property and I build a house and then twenty years from now I sell it to somebody else, how's that person twenty years from now going to know what happened?
Yeah, which happens, right? We have, I'm sure we have plenty of examples of that happening. I like the idea though of the permanent easement for future, I like, I like that a lot because that puts it on them to, to build that in beforehand. The fi- I like the five hundred feet too, so, I don't, how do you feel about that, Commissioner Capola?
I would like to see that and explore that option, yes. See that in writing, what that means.
I know we haven't been, I haven't been very clear, but I think you guys understand the intent that we have that we could do that but have a little extra tool to, for, you know, to, for special, special circumstances. But, you know, like you said, there's certain areas that may not fit in that. So, I like, but I really do like the idea of the permanent easement for future sites. I like that a lot, so.
Do we need to take a break? We've been going at it for a while.
Where are we at on our list of questions?
We are at number six.
We're, Matt, sure, we're, we're more than halfway.
Yeah.
Almost.
Sorry, I wanted to see where we're at.
We're number seven.
Okay, and we have, we have ten, eight?
But the, the last three are going to be fast.
Okay, cool.
This one is not.
Yeah.
Um, so, we're going to continue? All right. Uh, this is the issue of reverse setbacks from plugged and abandoned wells. And there are a number of issues going on. Um, one of the most important is that the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission is looking at financial assurances right now and looking at making sure that operators have adequate bonding and have put away adequate, uh, financing to be able to deal with their asset retirement obligations, uh, meaning plugging and abandoning their wells. Uh, this is an issue that's going to come up, um, and it's important, I think, to maintain, uh, good incentives for the oil and gas industry and even the development community to get these, these wells plugged and abandoned. I think that it is wrong, frankly, for the state not to have taken some initiative to put forward a recommendation that we don't place homes and businesses on top of plugged and abandoned wells because it's just unsafe. And it is very rare and, and I guess I, I'd like to see the, um, the study that you've just mentioned and, and I'll look for it. Uh, hopefully, you know, we can correspond and you can send it to me, but.
Yeah, I'm, if you're on the public and, and you called me about that study and mentioned it, could you send that to me so I can share it?
Yeah, so, um, the studies that, that were just reviewed, uh, by the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission on the issue of methane emissions from, uh, plugged and abandoned wells showed that it was really negligible, that, you know, it's going to be less than one percent, uh, of wells that, that are going to be showing some, some methane emissions. It happens. Uh, there are some wells that were plugged and abandoned even as, um, late as two thousand four, the one that was in Broomfield that all of a sudden started leaking. And that was because it wasn't properly plugged and abandoned, it wasn't properly monitored afterwards and it got signed off before it was ready to be. I mean, it should never have been, um, authorized to be, you know, officially plugged and abandoned. There are regulations that have since come in from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen that, um, won't allow that to happen. You know, it, they've solved those issues and now have to have the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission certify that it's properly plugged and abandoned.
Forgive me for interrupting.
No, it's okay. I just want to make sure that I didn't lose my train.
The explosion that occurred, the explosion that occurred in, was it Erie?
That was in Firestone.
Pardon?
Firestone.
Firestone, wasn't that because there were some, well, I was, I had to move with. Firestone, wasn't that because there were some, well, I was, ahead of the war with flow lines or something that weren't properly closed, closed or something? Could, could you speak to that please?
Sure, yeah, that was a tragedy that was because a flow line that was coming from an existing producing oil and gas well was not properly plugged and abandoned. And they, unfortunately, when they started up, uh, it was a new, um, company that had taken it over, didn't recognize that the flow line was improperly plugged and abandoned or was, wasn't plugged and abandoned and, and ended up leaking methane into, into a basement. Um, that was the subject of two rulemakings at the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission and now that has to also be certified. There has to actually be a Coal and Gas Conservation Commission or a third party inspector that certifies that it was properly plugged and abandoned, those flow lines. So, I, I think that there are certainly circumstances in any industry, if they're violating rules and regulations, that there can be problems. Um, but I don't foresee that issue happening for any of the wells, uh, in Larimer County under the certain regulations, under the existing regulations and the existing certifications that are required for a well to be considered properly plugged and abandoned.
Thank you, and quick follow up, and that is, I, didn't the state do an inventory through, determine that there were quite a number of, uh, um, wells that had been abandoned and not properly sealed? And that it was on the taxpayers' dime to get, we were able to hire, you know, inspectors to go out and, could, could you speak to that sir?
Yeah, that's the orphan well, um, problem that we have in the state. And right now there are existing on the orphan well list, uh, more than two hundred wells in the state of Colorado that haven't been properly plugged and abandoned. They're in a shut in condition or temporarily abandoned. Uh, and they haven't been properly plugged and abandoned because the operator has declared bankruptcy or left the state or otherwise. There's also four hundred locations that haven't been properly reclaimed. Making sure that that doesn't happen is really central to the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission effort and some of the regulations that we're proposing here to ensure that they have, uh, adequate bonding, uh, to ensure that that never happens. That, that the taxpayers, um, or future generations aren't on the hook to try to clean up that mess. That there's adequate bonds to be able to, to access that money and to be able to get that work done as soon as the well needs to be plugged and abandoned.
Thank you.
So is that, that, that suggestion bonded and set at a local level or at the state level? And then the local government has to apply to the state to get that, that help, or is that still being determined?
Uh, what is being proposed is that we're looking at a ninety thousand dollar, um, per well bond that is, uh, going to increase with inflation. And if they are able to, um, or require a bond that is going to be sufficient at the state, that that could be reduced or eliminated. But, and not until there's an adequate, uh, amount of, of money that is, that, that the state is requiring to, um, for them to post for reclamation and abandonment.
Thank you.
So I think I mentioned this, I mean, it was last week I talked about, I had been at an event where the, the, uh, oil and gas, um, uh, producer was to, telling the homeowners how great it was gonna be that once they plugged and abandoned that well, they would cut it several feet below and cement it and then they build a brand new nice playground over the top of it. So you're saying that's something we could put in there to say, can't put playgrounds and homes on top of the well like that?
Um, uh, you know, honestly, I think a playground is a perfect use for, uh, an area that has been plugged and abandoned. If you were to have even a fifty feet, you know, that is going to allow for an acre or more, um, to be utilized by a neighborhood that's nearby. Um, and would still allow for access to that location in the very extremely rare event that they need to go back and replug and abandon that well. Again, it's never happened, um, under current regulations and under current, uh, requirements. There has been no well that has needed to have been replugged and abandoned. What happens in thirty years, we don't know. We wanna keep there, you know, at least fifty feet, uh, of space and radius, hundred diameter around those locations to be able to access those in the rare event that they need to be plugged and, replugged and abandoned. Again, um, extremely rare, even under existing, uh, the regulations and the plugging abandonment that was occurring back in the nineteen seventies for that, uh, need to occur or them, them to, uh, start leaking. But, uh, under the existing regulations, I don't foresee that at all, just because they have to put so much cement down hole that it, it's just really improbable that you're gonna have leaking of, of those new oil and gas wells. So what we've put forward is, is a fifty foot, um, from, uh, an abandoned well, allowing for development to occur as close as, as fifty feet from an abandoned well. Um, and that requirement is, um, going to apply to any, you know, building or structures, uh, not just residential structures.
I wanna say Fort Col, city of Fort Collins had some kind of rules on that, um, because there were some, there's some in that Fort Col, north Fort Collins area. And I wanted to say it was a hundred and fifty, I wonder if we can, a hundred and fifty feet? And then if they wanted it closer, they had a, could we, um, is there anything in here that, um, yeah, that, I like the idea that, about the ensuring that the development, um, must verify that the well is properly plugged and abandoned? I think that that would be a great addition. But I mean, if we could also find out about the Fort Collins, a hundred and fifty feet, then that, that would be helpful to me, cause fifty feet.
Are, are you thinking that there would be a hundred and fifty foot setback? But if you could prove that it was properly plugged and abandoned, that you could go closer?
Yeah, something like that.
May I, may I go back? I hate to do this to you. Um, there was one thing that popped in my head I forgot to ask about, um, and, let's see. Um, setback, um, I'm hoping I get the right number here, eleven point three point two point, oh, I guess it's four? And I have a page, it says page six here, an article eleven, on, um, talking about, um, and I hate to go back, but it just, I just forgot I was, I saw a note that I, I wanted to ask about this. Um, it says, oil, oil and gas locations proposed by the county should be within five hundred feet of rivers and streams and existing water storage facilities. And it talks about ditches that transport water used by or to augment a public water supply system. And, um, I live, you know, I, I, I see lots of ditches, um, they're running really full right now, um, with the runoff. Should, is, could we, should we, um, un, augment that statement to add, um, ditches that are used for agricultural use as well? Or is that gonna make it really complicated? Cause I'm thinking about ditches that go between prop, you know, like, it doesn't go to public system, but they're watering this huge agricultural thing and that ditch is like, oops, sorry, going through something and it, um, is irrigating crops. And I don't know if that makes it, is that getting too complex or is that, um, does it supply and, and it supplies other property owners? You know, for, for irrigation purposes. Is that something we could add or is that, um, and I'm sorry to go back from the plug, but I.
I'm not sure I'm in the right spot. Can you say the number again?
Um, eleven, it's in eleven, you know, the article eleven point zero, and it's, uh, eleven point three point two, location restriction. And it was back when we were talking about the setbacks, the two thousand setback, setback, and I'm sorry to go on a tangent, but I, I forgot to mention this. Um, and it, and it, uh, it's on the next page, um, and it's number four on my page. And it talks about rivers and streams and ditches that transport water.
I think you could, and, and Matt can, I guess, I'd comment, you could, but I think the distinction is, you know, there's, there's reservoirs and there's ditches that directly feed into water storage facilities, and then there's ones that don't. And so, you know, they're not used for the same purposes, and so you may have different risk levels associated with it. Now that's up to you guys how you wanna deal with that, but I think, you know, so, yes, you could do it. You may have reasons why you wouldn't wanna do it the same way. One being, like you said, there's ditches all over the place.
Yeah.
I think that would, it caused some extreme restriction of land use or available land for oil and gas development. And I'm not sure that you have the immediate concern. What this is addressing is rivers and streams, which is for wildlife, um, existing storage facilities, you know, future storage facilities. That's a drink, public drinking water and then ditches that transport water. Again, it's about, um, public drinking water supplies. When you're talking about whether or not a field would experience, you know, some detriment to, uh, some oil that was spilled in, in, into a ditch. I, I just don't see it. I, the, the oil and gas industry is not going to want to be immediately adjacent to, um, a ditch for a lot of practical purposes, given that it's just difficult to, to operate if you've got a ditch that's running through your, your oil and gas facility.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm just thinking, you know, also we think about wells, when you drive out, there's, they're, they're very close to a lot of ditches and things out there with their water. But it just something, if you, if you run across something or other thing that does, I just wanted to kinda, um, just something that I wanted to ask about because there's, there's also ag, irrigation and some of those ditches run pretty full. So, I'm sorry to take down that tangent, but I'd like to just think about that, so.
Yeah, please.
I'd also comment to, to what's actually written in there, to what's written in there right now. Talks about ditches that run water potentially for, uh, uh, for municipal water suppliers or whatnot. I mean, a lot of the ditches run that. I mean, that's even, it'd be hard to say, to even monitor because that's just how water moves around here. I would say this, that the special review process that's gonna be used to evaluate these requires us that within, you know, if there's an affected ditch company or something within a, a reasonable distance, you know, five hundred feet of that, that we're gonna be notifying these ditch companies of these applications as well. So they're gonna be able to respond back to us, any of their concerns, and then you'd be able to weigh in on those again, so, you know. Most of them probably won't have an issue, but if they do, uh, and they feel it's important, they'll probably comment on it.
And is the five hundred feet that is proposed, is that, um, very standard of much other counties are doing?
Uh, we can look at the notification requirements and make sure that we come up with a number for notification.
But, and the, the were, um, the setbacks were suggesting at five hundred feet from those ditches?
No, it, it's, it's greater than is required in most cases, um.
So, but we're suggesting five hundred?
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm sorry again, I, I appreciate your patience to let me go back. I, I put my sticky in the wrong spot, so that's why I'm sticky, I saw that, sorry. Thank you colleagues for your patience.
So, um, I heard a, a couple of, of comments around plugged and abandoned wells. Um, I had heard that, I, I think it was, uh, Commissioner Stevens that mentioned maybe looking at a hundred and fifty foot, uh, setback from a plugged and abandoned well unless the developer could prove that, that well was properly plugged and abandoned and wasn't leaking. Uh, maybe there's two showings there where they would actually go out and take some soil samples. Because these wells are not visible to the, the public. They are three feet at least below the surface, um, cut off and typically there's, you know, vegetation growing. Um, I will note that if there is vegetation over top of it, um, and there is any sort of leak, that would kill off any vegetation, kind of giving you some hint that there was a problem there. Um, again, I, um, it's extremely rare that that would, that would happen, um, particularly for the wells that are plugged and abandoned recently. However, having said that, there are a lot of plugged and abandoned wells. Um, in the county, there is, uh, and I was kinda surprised by this, uh, two hundred and fifty-three plugged and abandoned wells. So, there may be areas that, you know, are, are nowhere near fifty feet. There may be areas that, you know, there are plugged and abandoned wells that are, that are less than that. Uh, because this isn't, not been something that has been, you know, monitored. Coal and Gas Conservation Commission's, uh, interaction with local governments has only been robust in the last several years. Um, so, you know, we may find that, you know, there are certainly a lot of acres that are gonna be impacted, uh, even by a fifty foot buffer.
So you'll verify those numbers of Fort Collins? Do you think it's a hundred and fifty or you think it might be more or?
I don't think it's more than that, but I, I'm not, I, I can't say for certain.
I, I can look at Fort Collins.
I just remember, uh, development up in the northern part of town and that, that was what, it, we did have the developer was required to go out and, and test and see if there was any leaks and before they, and then there was some accommodation made because they, they were willing to do that. So to me, that seems like a, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear, you're not talk, and the health department may have to weigh in, but you're not talking about just methane testing. You're talking about testing for leaking generally, right?
Yeah, right.
Methane would be what you would find because it's the most common constituent coming from an oil and gas well in this area. Um, there certainly could be benzene and other things, but methane is gonna be predominant and probably the, the most important thing to test for.
Has it, may I ask the health department, I mean, what else, has there ever been any kind of contamination where it wasn't methane? But you saw these other contaminants show up in soil or water or, is that an appropriate question?
Sean, uh, Hackit, if you could help us with this one.
Somebody? Sorry, I, I am just like, I don't know who to write the question to. I don't even know if I can ask the question.
Thank you commissioners. I'm, I'm not aware personally. I mean, I, I'm, I'm aware of the issue in Broomfield of methane leaking into the soil from the Davis well. Um, but my understanding is that that was a isolated and uncommon event. Um, but I, you know, I'm not aware of other, other situations where other pollutants other than methane, um, were the contaminant of concern.
Yeah, I, I, for me, I guess I'll just say that, you know, I think some setbacks are important because while, while these situations are rare, we're often protecting against rare events, right? I mean, you have to, you know, there are a lot of instances where we're, you know, we're still protecting the public because of, you know, you want a house that's gonna withstand a, a tornado. It's, you know, or, uh, in, in Los Angeles, it's gotta, you know, withstand an earthquake. I mean, those actually happen a lot, but, um, you know, I mean, you're, you're not just building for the best case scenario. A lot of times you're really trying to protect for some of the, some of the worst case scenarios. So while it's rare, I still think it's important to pay attention to it.
Yeah. So, so are you, so can we come back and discuss this once, not that I'm saying, oh, we gotta do what other, um, municipalities are doing, but I'd be curious to what Fort Collins had done, just so there's like.
I can bring that back for sure.
Yeah, um, uh, that's a lot of plugged and abandoned wells, I think, I was surprised by that number too, so. Okay, and what's the difference between, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, my head's kinda spinning. What is the difference between a dry and abandoned and a plugged and abandoned? Is that just the concrete versus an older well?
Yeah.
Is that what is basically the difference?
Right, dry abandoned is worse, can be. It, it really, it varies based on how the well was drilled, how deep the well was drilled. Um, a dry and abandoned means that it could be a well that they just left because they never got any oil, they never got any gas. So it's just a, you know, a, a, a hole in the ground that they might have put some dirt in, um, that they never properly cemented.
So should we have a different set of standards for that unless there's variance or testing or they can prove? I mean, did, is it help?
Many of these, I, as I said, many of these wells, um, weren't drilled to, uh, depth where they're going to create any oil and gas.
Oh, okay.
But, um, I, I think that. But, um, I, I think that maybe here again, this is something that requires some investigation. And, uh, you know, if they can show that this is not a well that the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission believes should be plugged and abandoned, you know, they're, they're not asking these to be plugged and abandoned. They're allowing them to be considered dry and abandoned and left in that condition.
Okay.
Look at us, making real progress. Um, eight is, uh, should the county design a specific section to address fines and penalties for the oil and gas industry? And this is, I think, uh, an, an easier one in that, um, the land use code doesn't list any penalties for any of your land use code, um, requirements. And if you wanted to build out, uh, a specific penalty section for oil and gas development, I would suggest that you would want to look generally, more generally at, um, penalties for other land uses and, and infractions. Uh, and to just isolate the oil and gas industry and say, we're going to, you know, have a different section and, and have a penalty section specifically for this one industry, um, may not be a, a good use of resources. Um, and I'm not sure it's warranted. However, um, that could be done and, and it would just require some additional work, uh, on, on staff's behalf.
So, and that's interesting, I, you know, thought to think, but if there's no penalties, what's the, what's the, uh, the tool we have to enforce things if they're not complying? We don't have penalties.
Well, well, I think you, you know, can kind of think about it again in a couple of ways where I go to the, what's the point of interception, right? I mean, you, you're permitting the thing in the first place. And so, once they've got the permit, the question you're asking, which is good, is, well, what's your ability to enforce if they're not behaving after the fact when they've done something wrong? And I think the best answer to that is that's what the bond is for, right? I mean, if you've got a bond where somebody's not staying compliant with whatever regulations they're supposed to stay compliant with, that's why you have this money on hand to make sure they're not misbehaving, right? In terms of, you know, how we deal with these sorts of things generally, if you have a landowner who's gotten a permit to do some particular use and then they don't comply with it, you can have a procedure where you try to revoke the permit, but then you have to go through a process to do that, right? There's due process considerations and you have to go through that. You can file an injunction, you can do a number of different things. So, there are tools available. I think that when we originally developed these, this part of the code on the last go around, we didn't want to limit ourselves to, to one particular enforcement mechanism. We wanted to give ourselves the option to proceed in the variety of ways that were available to us to proceed. And so, I think if you say it's a five thousand dollar fee for this thing and a ten thousand dollar fee for this thing, well, that, that may have some deterrent effect and that may be what you're going for. But it also may lock you in a little bit on maybe one thing is more egregious, maybe one thing is less egregious. So, you know, I'm not saying you have to do it one way or the other. I'm just telling you, I think when we came up with this originally, that was the thinking as to why we did it that way.
Do the Colorado revised statutes, as referenced here in this section one point nine point four of our land use code, do the Colorado revised statutes provide, um, you know, provide for an effective, uh, enforcement mechanism? Are they specific enough, or is that?
I, I mean, effective, I guess, depends on how you, you know, is a relative term. But, but I think, again, you got, you think about what is it you're trying to accomplish? And, and one thing is a deterrent effect, right? Some kind of financial penalty to have some kind of deterrent effect outside of the correction. Because most likely what's, if there was an issue, what would happen is there'd be a spill or some kind of bad action, which would get corrected, and then the initial concern is getting it directed as soon as you possibly can. And then the second concern is the deterrent effect you might have by some sort of penalty for that kind of bad action. There are statutes that allow us to penalize people for a daily penalty. Every time they're, have another day where they're penal, they're doing something wrong. And this is how the state regulates a lot of things, right? They say, you're in violation of the air quality standard, and every day you continue to be in violation of the air quality standard is another thousand dollars or something like that, right? So, that's the kind of structure that exists at the state level largely to regulate these sorts of issues. Again, one being deterrence, two being get it cleaned up as quick as you possibly can. So, I think a structure like that might be, have some value. Um, I just don't, I don't want us to be limited in our ability to pursue whatever way to get it cleaned up as quickly as we possibly can.
So, could it be an and, and/or kind of situation?
I think it can, and, and part of the issue here again is, is, again, one, getting it cleaned up as po, as fast as you possibly can, which if there's an emergent situation and you've got toxic chemicals, you're less worried about making sure they get, you know, a more in-depth process of hearings and notice and all this other stuff. If you're going to revoke somebody's permit, you have to go through that due process to, it, it's difficult, I guess, is what I'd say. It's difficult to go through that process, especially if what you're really worried about is cleaning it up. So, I think you could do an and. I think it makes sense to, I think we need to come back to you with some additional recommendations for the best way to get this penalty section outlined. And I'm not saying fees or penalties aren't a bad idea. I think there may be some tool for that. But I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want to restrict it to just the only penalty is and the only enforcement mechanism is fee or penalties.
So, if there is a spill or something like that, when does the Department of Health, our Department of Health, jump in? And deal, and do they have fines and penalties for that?
Not right now, I don't think, do you? Not specific to oil and gas, but it, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but do we have them for health inspections and, and, I mean, we have fines and penalties for health inspections or restaurants? And other things?
Yeah, we, we do. This is Chris Manley, Environmental Health Director. Um, we do have, um, fines and penalties for each of those program areas. For oil and gas specifically, we'd have to have it attached to that regulation if we couldn't pull from other regulations and, and assign those penalties.
Okay. And we don't have it as a general rule for our planning department for when people are not implying, com, compliance of the code, of any land use code, we're, of the, of the mindset, we'd like to encourage folks to be compliant. We don't have these fees. So, in general, that's kind of the, that's always been that way?
Yeah, that's the way it's been in planning, that, you know, it's kind of like, correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, but you, i- if you're going to have a finding mechanism, you got to give somebody the authority to provide the fine. So, it's kind of like sheriff's officer, you know. I, our code compliance officers aren't allowed to go out and write tickets to somebody. They'd love to, um, because they think that that would be a good way to get compliance. But, uh, we have not initiated those types of things and given that broad authority to people as well as finding mechanisms. Um, we haven't done that. We've left that to be largely a decision of the Board of County Commissioners. And, uh, more often than not, we didn't even find through you guys. It's, and ended up going to the courts and the courts being the ones that lay out fines, um, for us. So, that's been how we've operated as long as I've been here, um.
You, you can get fines through the courts. I think what we can do is put something together through a combination of, of saying, you got to make sure you got enough money to deal with any problem that's going to come up so that we've got the money available to solve the problem. And then some kind of a deterrent effect to say, if you do this, there's potential deterrence, you know, don't do it. Now, you know, there's costs of doing business that people factor into things. And so, I don't know how high the fine would have to be to make it a deterrent effect, but that's something we can discuss, right?
Thank you.
Well, and you have to also remember that most of the requirements that we have, um, are mirrored somehow at the state level. And so, there are state fines that they're going to be, uh, subject to. And hopefully, we're going to be the ones that are finding those folks because we're going to have more people on the ground, uh, inspecting these facilities and not necessarily the ones that are enforcing it and bringing the enforcement action that can be done through the Coal and Gas Conservation Commission. Again, you know, given the fact that the whole land use code refers to section one point nine point four, and this is the way that the entire land use code is enforced, is through this, this statement, um, we were reluctant to put forward a brand new enforcement section that doesn't apply anywhere else to any other part of the code. Uh, but if that's what you're looking for, we can certainly, um, work on that. It might take a, a minute.
Um, I bet it's going to take more than a minute. Uh, Boulder has, it looked like Boulder had something. Do, do they have other fines then that apply to other land use code violations then? Did, did, did they? Because I, I was thinking I saw that in that comparison chart that they had some.
They do.
They do, okay. Um.
I, I guess, like I said, that's just good to keep in mind. I know I've said this like four times, so I apologize. But what are you trying to do? Are you trying to get it cleaned up as fast as possible? Or are you trying to stop them from doing something bad in the first place? Those are two different enforcement.
Both, well.
You know, right. But I'm just saying, those are two different, procedurally, those are two different things. One happens, you know, after the fact in an emergent situation and the other happens sort of less emergently.
So, you're saying consider them both?
Right, yeah. I'm not saying do one or the other. I'm just saying they're two different.
Do you want to establish a finding mechanism that would be strong enough to suggest that they don't, that they work really hard not to create a violation, but that if they do, there's a fund sitting over here that we know we can go with, withdraw from to solve a, a leak or a spill or something if they're not willing to.
Right, because, I mean, I, I guess that goes to sort of a larger question about liability on, like, something that happened. So, how, I mean, if, if there's a bad situation, I mean, you know, they're liable to, to do all the cleanup. I mean, what happens with, with companies that run out of money or go out of business or declare bankruptcy? I mean, how on the hook is, is the county? And would any kind of fines help, you know, I don't know, build up a fund that we could use in case there were situations that we weren't, I, I, I don't know. I'm just asking that kind of thing because, I mean, I, what I, one thing that I've heard to be sort of wary of is these, you know, while they, they're getting seventy-five percent of their product out or whatever in the first three years or whatever, and then, hey, we're going to sell to, you know, Joe Smith because he's a, he's a little guy, but he's willing to get the rest of what's down there out for, you know, and then Joe is not as financially viable as these other folks. And, and so, when it comes to any of the regulations, he's not as, as on top of it as maybe a bigger company that has more resources are. I mean, there, there are concerns like that that I've heard.
And, and that absolutely happens, and that's really why we have the financial provisions that we do. And they haven't been, well, there were some industry comments, um, from Colorado Oil and Gas Association that questioned the ninety thousand dollar well, um, bond that we were putting forward. Um, but the other provisions around insurance really deal with, um, some of those leak issues, you know, and if there's something emergent or if there's something that happens over time, we've written, uh, really strong insurance requirements that would protect the, the county from both mishaps. And so, um, allowing for a plugging abandonment bond to be claimed, uh, in the need for, um, an emergent situation, that hasn't been contemplated. We could look at that. Um, I'm not sure that it's necessary. And I'm not sure that the county wants to be the one that is in there directing traffic and, and getting a, a well plugged. Uh, it's probably something that frankly is more appropriate at the, the state to, to step in because that's what they do. They know how to deal with those issues and, and do it, you know, well. So, um, it sounds to me that we do want to look at some potential penalties, um, for the oil and gas industry specifically?
I, I'd be curious to know if other jurisdictions are, have, had kind of fine schedule, um, specific to this industry. I don't know if anybody else is doing that, local jurisdictions. Maybe that's an appropriate ne- next step to see what their experience has been.
I, I'll do a survey and, and give you some options. Um, moving right along to the county set an application fee for oil and gas application during this revision process. I, I would like, uh, to suggest that we punt on this, given the fact that you do have, uh, a fee schedule process that's separate, um, from these code revisions and is probably more appropriately done at that time when you're doing all the other, uh, schedule. Um, I don't, I don't know. That, it's, is it once every year or is it once every two years that that occurs? Is it annually?
Well, the, the, the way we increase our fees is handled annually. Whether or not we do a complete fee analysis of how we charge fees is done once every five to, to seven years.
It, and the only comment I'll make on that is, you know, a fee, the idea of, again, you probably know this, the fee is, how much does it cost us to process the application? It's not, you, you have to go through this analysis of how much staff time does it take Leslie and her team to do it? And then you make a fee related to that cost. So, we'd need time to go through that and figure that out, which we can do. And then we can, you can adopt a fee for whatever's appropriate for however long it takes them to do it. It probably would take more time than a traditional special review because it's a more in-depth analysis. So, but we, that part is something the staff can figure out.
And that's something that we got to talk about. I think, um, Leslie and I've had some conversations on this that we have, uh, good resources at the Health Department. We've got good resources in our, our department, in our engineering department. However, whether or not we have the time and the energy and, and the total resources and expertise to deal with all those issues probably will lead us in the long run to having to use some outdoor, outside resources to do that. And we're not prepared to say what those fees are because we don't know what they are. And they, they could change based upon the size, scale, and location of an operation. So, it's something that we're going to have to probably consider pretty heavily outside of this process.
Isn't there a provision in the latest draft of the regulations? It says if, uh, the application is very complex and.
Right.
The, the director has the ability to, um, ask for a technical review and third-party input. And I believe it says that.
Yes.
Could require that the app, applicant pay the cost. So, I think that's one way of, of dealing with some of the more expensive stuff.
And it still leaves us, you know, let's say a consultant costs twenty thousand dollars and we find that out in the process. I'm just throwing a number out there. There's still internal costs to us, you know, notification costs, um, preparation costs, things like that that are going to be incurred by. So, there'll probably be a fee that covers our, our costs. And then there might be a fee beyond that if we feel that the applications are sufficiently complex to require outside resources.
So, when you do this review and stuff, how much is the Health Department, our local Health Department involved with some of that? And do we need to consider their time, staff time in areas as well and build that into that?
That's, we, yes, we would. That would be part of the fee analysis, yeah.
And then with this assurance, when we talk about bonding and stuff, you know, I still, I can still see the picture in my mind after the two thousand thirteen flood and the tanks, battery tanks floating away. And we had to, and that, that was, ended up being taxpayers cleaning a lot of that up. Is there something we can, I don't know where that, how that happens. Is there some kind of fund we can build for, I mean, because it's not if we're going to have another flood, it's when. And with this burn scar and this other flooding, the hydrophobic soils we have for the next few years, do we need to build in some kind of pot for natural disasters? Because I, I still see all those batteries floating away in the floodwaters downstream. And there was a lot of cleanup with that, as I remember.
I, I'm, I think that the appropriate way to look at that is for, uh, insurance provision. Um, and to have really high requirements as, as proposed. Um, you know, and, and I, I don't know that it makes sense. And I don't think that you can put aside, um, permit fees, you know, for a rainy day or for a flooded day. Um, that would probably be an appropriate use of those fees.
But that's, that it, but that would be covered in that insurance thing that's listed in here right now?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so, the last question that I have, uh, is the county regulate geophysical seismic surveys. Thanks. Um, so the last question that I have, uh, is the county regulate geophysical seismic surveys. Um, I think that it makes sense to do that. Again, this is not, this is gonna be a separate section probably in, uh, Article eleven. But it's not an oil and gas facility. It doesn't have a setback requirement. It's very separate and apart. Um, and I, I think it would probably look more like, um, an access permit that could either be done administratively or it can be done, uh, come to you, uh, for final approval. Uh, these are things that, that I've done, um, some negotiating of a few of them. And, and there are certainly issues that, that arise. Notification to make sure that people know what's going on so they're not calling you and your staff, um, and, and questioning these trucks that are out there, uh, and making sure that those trucks are, are appropriately getting permission from private landowners if they're accessing their property, um, which they shouldn't. Most of the time they're gonna be on public roads and working with the transportation department to make sure that there's no infrastructure, uh, or domestic water wells that they're anywhere near. I, I like a three hundred foot setback from any facilities that might be a concern for your utilities department or for your Department of Transportation. So I think that I could frame that out pretty quickly and, and I'm not concerned about it. But it is kind of a separate issue that we'd just like to have you, all three, nod your heads and say that we should do it.
Yeah, I, I support that.
Okay. And that's all I have is in terms of the, the issues that we wanted to discuss tonight.
We didn't, great. I, I, I appreciate everyone being here so late tonight. But we didn't ask too many questions of our health department, I, except for the cha- childcare and some of the things. Is there some areas that we, is it, is it appropriate to ask, is there some areas that the health department is still thinking about or concerned? Or, or do you guys, you guys are, you guys are with this conversation a lot of this anyway, correct?
I have a question. It's not really part of the land use code. But, uh, I know with the director, the public health director, Tom, there's been discussions about whether or not we should, uh, acquire the infrared cameras to help with, um, better detection of, uh, I think it's primarily CH four or, or methane.
That's right.
Um, I wonder if you could provide us with an update of your thinking on that? Cause I know there's a cost associated and I think the state would provide some training. But that would be a question I have, even though I don't believe it's in the land use code, right? It's kind of a, another deal. Is that okay?
Um, well, as Leah Schneider, environmental planner, um, I think we obviously don't have, environmental health doesn't have the budget for the frill or the FLUR camera. It's, you know, usually about a hundred thousand dollars. And then it would take lots of training and, uh, including, um, regular certification for our staff. Um, and the state health department has offered that. Um, there's also the issue of, you know, storing data after we actually take these pictures. Like it's, you know, how long will we have to keep this on site and, um, in the data system? Um, we've talked to Boulder a little bit too. It's usually about one full-time employee. They, their program, their voluntary program that they had involved renting, the regional air quality council, um, has a, a FLUR that we can rent. Maybe our new, our new representative could get us a deal. It's eight thousand dollars, uh, for a couple of months at a time. But if you ever wanted to do like a site, you know, an assessment of our existing sites, um, we could get the training and we could use that, um, camera with RAC, uh, just to do some test runs, uh, to see if it's a viable program for us. Um, but yeah, for, as of right now, we don't have any plans for purchase in the next year or two. Um, unless Board of County Commissioners would like to have some conversations with us.
Have you determined that it's not a good investment? I, I thought that, uh, I mean, what are the public health benefits of this or the, or better understanding of greenhouse gas emissions? Um, and if it's a good public investment, then maybe it should be, you know, included in our budget request for, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I, I, I think in the long run, yeah, it, it probably is something that's, that's in our best interest, um, to obtain the equipment and get trained on it. Um, maybe the tie-in here to what we're talking about tonight is that there are some complaint type inspections built into the code. There's some of those pieces that I think having the proper equipment would be necessary if, if we're gonna do those. Um, so I think that's probably where that.
I can also add with our air pollution control division contract that we have, our current air quality program, we are contracted by the state to conduct inspections of stationary sources, including oil and gas. And it just makes it difficult to respond to the complaints of state emissions or leaks because we don't have the right equipment. But we're basically kind of the feet in the field. And then we put together the reports everything and send it. If we need to issue compliance, we can send that to the state health department and they'll take the compliance measure from there. Um, but if we had more of that, like we have, uh, four-way monitors that we have to wear, uh, flame retardant clothing, um, you know, the whole spiel when we go onto these sites to do our site investigations. And, uh, a FLUR camera would help with immediate response to complaints by the public. And they know they could contact us. It's more local transparency instead of relying on a state health department agency to come up if, if you guys are looking for more local involvement.
So it sounds like you're making the case that we should figure out the, uh, the financial, what's that? I, I'm still a little confused. I, I, you're suggesting that it would be a good investment? And so that means we ought to figure out, you know, together how we can, you know, what's the proper way to, um, identify those funds?
It might also be possible to look to our, you know, friends in other locales, whether it's Boulder County or, or other municipalities and have some sort of cost sharing and, and equipment sharing.
Or even, even with some of our local municipalities, perhaps. I would think the interest is there. There must be some creative ways to do some of that cost sharing. Thank you, Matsura. That, that, that's, I don't know if you had other things in mind for our, our public health folks?
Um, no, Mr. Chair. I just, I just appreciate everyone being here so late and being here and be- being available to answer the questions. And I, I'm sorry, I still can't remember the gentleman's name on the, huh, Sean, thank you, Sean. Um, just, you know, we, we went through all these lists, but I still feel like you guys were a great resource here. And I, I feel like you were here for Rebecca, but I felt like I always should have asked for questions. Um, do you guys currently get a lot of questions or complaints from hea- for headaches and nosebleeds or anything like that? Or do you get calls with that kind of thing? Is, and do you get, I mean, how, how often do we hear about this?
Yeah, we have, uh, investigated odor complaints and it's in relation probably to most of the ones that are in the northeast area of Fort Collins. So we've worked with the city of Fort Collins on some of those sites. Uh, but again, as mentioned previously, odor is a hard tool to use. And that's one of those, you know, the audio visual olfactory, the old school methods of looking for leaks. Um, the, uh, try to think if we've had, I've had noise complaints that I've had to work on, on a new site down in the southeast corner of Larimer County, um, that, and that was in the initial production phases. So we worked with them and they eventually were getting their electric generator, uh, like a, they were, the site was being electrified, but it was based on a large, like, train storage container, uh, diesel generator until that electricity got in. Um, and then as far as, um, emissions, we usually don't, we haven't been involved in many because most of them are in rural enough areas or just in the production phase, so we don't see too much. And most of the complaints that are coming in go into, uh, will go directly to the state health department again because I don't think enough are aware that we can respond. And I, I feel really bad. I do have some data from initially, like I think two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen of what COGCC has received on complaints and air pollution control divisions. So we could always look into that and see what they've received, if that helps you guys.
And Commissioners, if I could follow up on that as well, this is Sean Hackett, CDPH Energy Liaison. Just wanted to make sure you were aware, um, we do, CDPH does have information on one of our websites about complaints that have been received, um, health complaints from Larimer County. If you go to Colorado dot gov forward slash OG Health again, there's a concern report data, um, on the left side of the screen. There's a link for that. And I'm just gonna pull it up real quick. Since that program was launched in two thousand fifteen, looks like from Larimer County, there's been a total of twenty-four complaints. Ten of those were health-related, eight of those were non-health-related. And, um, looks like six questions were associated with that. But you can, uh, get a breakdown of those reports and the types of, uh, concerns that people were reporting. Actually, a really useful data dashboard. Looks like the majority of those, thirty-one percent, were headaches. Um, then eye irritation, nausea, difficulty breathing, um, and there's more on the list that you can, you can check out yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. You've, uh, your presence here has been most helpful and much gratitude for you sticking it out with us, um, at, at this point. I'm wondering unless there are other questions for these folks. Uh, earlier, I'm a little bit reluctant to ask this, but I guess I, I ought to. But, but you had indicated that once we got through Matsura's ten questions, you had additional questions. I guess before, I'd like to know what, what you're thinking there, Commissioner.
Ac- actually, during our discussion, most of my questions were, were addressed, so I appreciate that, so.
Oh.
Cause they, as we were going along, as we had the discussions, they got addressed. So I don't have, I've got all my questions, um, addressed, which I'm very, very grateful for. Thank you.
Wonderful. I, because I have to be quite honest, I'm, I've been up since four in the morning and my, um, I'm having diminishing returns here, um, just like other folks. So with that in mind, and Commissioner Stevens, I don't know if there's anything else you wish to add or, or folks across the way there, if there's anything else, Matt, that you wanted to add? Or perhaps Mr. Hackett, Sean, uh, you know, we'll, I think we'll move towards closing our work session this evening.
The one issue that, I guess the one question that I have for staff is, um, got a lot of direction. And we had a, a deadline of this Friday that we were gonna get out a new draft. And I think that that would be ambitious, um, but maybe possible. Um, I would really like to have, to know if, if the staff feels that they're gonna have a chance to review anything that I was to send them on Thursday, uh, so we could post it on Friday or is there a way to move back those deadlines?
Um, Leslie Ellis, Community Development Director. So we had built in about a month of review time for a public draft. So I guess one option would be to move back the date by a week. Um, and that would take a week away from public review, but still allow for three full weeks for that. And we'd move the public meeting that's been scheduled till later in the month. Um, and, uh, that would give us a bit more time to do the work, to prepare based on what we've heard tonight. I don't think that shortcuts the public time too much because there would still be another review draft after that draft going into the hearings. Um, and then of course, if it was felt that at that time we needed more time, we could reschedule hearings. So that would be one option, um, that we could explore.
If, if I may, related to that, I, I seem to recall that when we talked about in our extension of our, uh, resolution, um, regarding a pause on oil and gas applications, I thought we said September or so. Could you clarify that? Because I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit reluctant, even though three weeks seems like a good amount of time. I'm a little bit reluctant to cut into that four-week, um, time period for folks to respond to, to actual drafts. Could you speak to that, Leslie?
That, um, so you are correct. So the moratorium extends through September fifteenth.
Yeah.
And we're currently scheduled for hearings at the end of July.
That's right.
So we could also look at scheduling hearings in August and just push everything back by about a, a month. Um, and that would give us more time between now and the time that we do a public draft for review and, and basically just add a month into the whole schedule to allow for a bit more drafting time now, so.
Is pushing back, Friday was a, a deadline to have a draft, this, this Friday. And it's been suggested that's not realistic. I, I think you're right. But you had said, Leslie, pushing it back a week, is that realistic? Or is more time needed to, you know, to process or incorporate some of the discussion tonight?
Looking at the people who are doing the work.
I'm gonna let Matt speak to that. I think we would have to figure out a time to have some open houses. But I, I think, what are we giving?
The other thing just, just to think about is with the Planning Commission, they only meet once a month. And so that's what gets complicated is getting it onto the Planning Commission's schedule. You guys meet more often than they do, so it's easier for you all. That's what I think Wesley's probably thinking is if, cause when are we scheduled for Planning Commission tonight?
Well, July twenty-first, I think is about the right date, Matt.
Well, we had a, if, if you looked at the schedule here on the screen, then it might be a little bit fuzzy. June, we were proposing to have the draft done so that on June third, we could have an open house discussion with the public before they start studying the, the draft regulations. Um, and then hopefully we would have some sort of response from that draft study to talk to you and the Planning Commission on June ninth, um, which is one month, about a month, month and a week or two ahead of a hearing time. So that gives us time to have that work session, make sure you guys are all comfortable with the direction we're going. And then the rest of the month was devoted to the public making a final review of, of whatever draft stuff we have. If we bump it a week, what's a week from the, this Friday? Uh, like the sixth, the fourth or the fifth?
The fourth.
So if we bumped it a week from Friday, that gives Matt a whole week to work on it. Is that fine, sir?
It's, it's your review as well, but yes.
Yeah, um, and then we could probably get a meeting scheduled at the public the following week. I don't know. I'd have to look at schedules. It's, just puts a little bit of onus on us to do that. I don't know how important this June third public open house is because we will just be putting out a draft. I think the more important public open house meeting is at the end of the review cycle.
Right, we would cancel June third.
So we could just cancel the June third, have the draft go out a week from this Friday. Um, and then that would give us, uh, the public at least, uh, three and a half weeks to look at this.
And we can shoot for that. And then if you feel like, no, you know, we really need more time, let's look at rescheduling hearings and so forth, we can do that too. That would still give us the option to try to move toward July hearings and hit some of these other dates. And of course, if, you know, you or the public or anybody's feeling like that just doesn't quite cut it, we need more time, then we have the option to move things back a bit.
So if I might, one other thing to consider, uh, if you're still looking for us to talk with the Planning Commission on June ninth, um, Commissioner Stevens and I will be out of town. I don't know what, exactly what time we're supposed to drive back. If, if it, if that goes till five, are we getting, I don't know if we get done early and we drive back to be on, to be able to be in a location where we can zoom in or we need to probably look into that to make sure we're?
Yeah, and that's probably more for the Planning Commission than for you because they have not had this discussion that you've had. So we could always schedule another work session, follow-up with you, um, aside from that date. Cause we were awa- aware that, um, maybe all three of you weren't gonna be there, at least two of you might not be there.
So Commissioner Stevens, did you have something you wanted to add to this to help us out? I, I, if not, I think we, I, I think we have some direction here, but I.
But I, that seems fine. I just, I know we were also leaving some room at the end for, you know, to, you know, because then we'll have these new regulations and you'll have to kind of scramble and have applications and kind of do all that work. Does that, does that leave enough time at the end if we extend that out a week, um, the process?
Yes, um, because at, at that point, we would still be aiming for the July adoption, the July adoption date. It gets a little bit more com-
It gets a little bit more compressed if we move that till August. Um, but I think we can still probably complete in time for the September fifteenth deadline if, even if we moved it to August. But I think what we're hearing is
Enjoy your Memorial Weekend, right?
That's what I, I was gonna say. I can't imagine too many people wanna see the draft comments come out on the twenty-eighth of the study for the third, because it can take up their Memorial Day weekend. But, but if we, if we put it out by the fourth, it gives the planning commission three or four days and a weekend to study.
It'll give the planning commission plenty of time to study for that and us to, to get them a brief on that. So. And then it, it does. It just shortens by one week the, the public review time. And, and if, if you look on the schedule here, at the end of the June is when we propose to end the public review time. Then the team is going to come up with one more draft version. We're gonna put together the final hearing version, which will go out on this July ninth. So, the public will even have another chance to look at that final version and prepare themselves for the public hearing comment times. So, there's, there's quite a bit of public opportunity in here for review, um, you know, on that.
So, I'm hearing that we'll, we'll, um, June fourth will be when, well, if all goes well, issue the, uh, the draft regulations, that June third op- open house would not occur. Is that right?
We'll get a notice out on that and cancel that.
Pardon?
We'll get a notice out and cancel that.
And, uh,
And we'll aim to schedule a public meeting at least a week after we release the draft because we've heard from the public that they like to have at least that amount of time to review it and be prepared to come and provide comments. So, somewhere around the tenth, not a Friday, though.
Fifteenth or something, maybe. Yeah.
We'll do a meeting.
Mid-month.
I, I'd just like us to be mindful of not compressing that as much as we can avoid going from four weeks to three. I, I heard three weeks, I heard three and a half weeks. But whatever we can do to make sure that folks have adequate time. And I think Commissioner Stevens, you're right about, at the tail end of all this, we wanna make sure that there's enough time to, you know, to put things in place, to actually do it, you know, be ready to, uh, a- actually begin accepting applications. So, are we all on the same page as far as how we're moving forward?
Yes, sir.
Actually, I one, I just remembered one question I had. I might, real quick.
What, what?
Are we allowing, are we just about floodplains? Are we allowing any develop, um, any of the oil and gas development floodplains?
We have not proposed to, to change the language that states that, um, they need to use best efforts to avoid any location in a floodplain. It does not, uh, explicitly prohibit that. However, we do have a five hundred-foot, uh, setback from rivers and streams. So, most of the floodplain is not gonna be available to, uh, oil and gas development.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Stevens? Then, uh, I think we've addressed our business tonight. And I believe we are, at nine twenty-four PM, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Sean Hackett, if you're still there. And, uh, certainly thank you to our, the person who, uh, televises and helps us to be more transparent to the public. But we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.